With liberty and justice for all. We had a executive session this evening. All commissioners were present, Commissioner Nagel. We discussed personnel matters, real estate matters, and litigation matters. I decided to move public participation down before we start our committee reports. Last week was very embarrassing that we spent so much time on public participation in the consent agenda and the police had a presentation to give and a lot of people were here for that and because we took so long, they all left. I was very embarrassed about that. I wish I would have known I just wasn't on top of that. So, we're going to try and get through the things that are, and then we'll go to public participation after we're done that. So now I'd like to have a motion on the consent agenda. Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Number D is coming off?
That is correct. They've issued us a continuance until next month.
All right, so number D is automatically out. Does anyone want to take A, B, or C off? Can I have a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with items A, B, and C.
A second.
Any comment, any public comment on A, C, or D, A, B, or C? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And passes six to zero. Now we have a presentation from the Delaware Riverkeeper to discuss the ruling on application of Article 1, Section 27 of the PA Constitution to PA municipalities.
Holy crap, that was fast.
Jennifer, it's on this-
You've got a lot of paper there.
No, no, that's paper I'm leaving behind, that's not paper I'm talking about. I'm sorry, my presentation is up here. We didn't think to get up so fast. The mouse isn't working. Okay. So. Oh, that's because I was using this last two. It's all right. Great, thanks. So hi, I'm Maya Van Rossum. I'm the Delaware Riverkeeper and my organization is the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. And I am here tonight to talk to you about the constitutional environmental rights amendment here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that protects the people's right to pure water, clean air, and a healthy environment. You may or may not know that in Pennsylvania, Article 1, Section 27 of the Constitution does protect our environmental rights. This provision of the Pennsylvania Constitution actually got placed in the Constitution in 1971, but for over 40 years, this provision was largely ignored. It was essentially characterized as a policy statement and it wasn't given substantive or legal authority. The reason why I'm bringing this to your attention now, today, is because just over a year ago, the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, along with seven towns, secured a very important Supreme Court decision, Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision, that talks about your obligations in implementing this provision of Pennsylvania's Constitution. Now, the legal action that we brought was in response to a provision passed by the general, or a piece of legislation passed by the General Assembly called Act 13. That was passed in 2012. And Act 13 was about shale gas extraction, about the shale gas industry. And what, Act 13 said a lot of things. One of the things it said was that every municipality had to allow shale gas extraction to happen in every part of their community and that your municipal zoning authority didn't matter. It actually didn't apply when it came to shale gas extraction. And so you could have drilling well pads as close as 300 feet to a house, a school, a hospital, a playground. It was irrelevant. Your zoning really didn't matter. As you can imagine, the Delaware Riverkeeper Network was very concerned by the environmental and community ramifications of this piece of legislation, but so too were municipal officials in towns across Pennsylvania because this stripped municipalities of their zoning authority in the context of shale gas extraction. So we brought a legal challenge. The argument that the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, and I in my role as the Delaware Riverkeeper, brought to this legal action was the constitutional provision. We said that these portions of Act 13 violated our environmental rights protected by Article 1, Section 27. And we received a very important decision written by the Chief Justice of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. Now, you might be, and it declared provisions of, did I say, declared provisions of the law unconstitutional and did a lot of important things. You might be wondering though, why am I bringing this to your attention? Because we don't have shale gas extraction in Radnor Township. But that's because the decision that was handed down by the Chief Justice, by the Supreme Court, does not apply only to shale gas extraction. It applies to all environmental issues in all communities across Pennsylvania. And so I just want to quickly highlight for you that this decision has been passed. It was passed in December of 2013. And highlight some of the key elements of the court decision that was issued. I actually have a copy of the plurality decision for you, written by the Chief Justice, but I just want to highlight a few key points for you. First off, one of the things that was made very clear by this decision, and actually in a recent decision that has come down after it, is that our environmental rights in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are on par with our political rights because they are included in the same section, Article 1, of the Pennsylvania Constitution. What are our political rights? Here are some examples of what our political rights are in Pennsylvania. Things like religious freedom, the freedom of the press, freedom of speech, the right to bear arms. These are political rights that are protected, well-protected by Pennsylvania's Constitution. So too are our environmental rights protected by this portion of Pennsylvania's Constitution. The Chief Justice in the plurality decision made very clear that when it came to our environmental rights, it's not just an obligation of the state legislature to protect those rights, to honor that constitutional provision, but local governments have that obligation as well. And that was mentioned several times in the opinion. So you, as municipal officials, have an obligation to ensure that Article 1, Section 27 is honored here in Radnor Township. The decision made very clear that all forms of government in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have an obligation, have a duty to refrain from permitting environmental degradation, but also a duty to restrain the actions of others that could result in environmental degradation. And that you yourselves have an obligation not to undertake actions that could directly violate people's environmental rights here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There was, by the way, there's a lot of discussion about the fact that this is a plurality opinion and what does that mean? Well, there are a whole lot of reasons. We have some recent decision-making out of the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania that is affirming all of these elements of the Supreme Court decision. And so if somebody claims to you it's a plurality opinion and so therefore these things that I'm talking about don't really matter, you should set that aside.
You mean that not a majority voted on the case because of absences, but rather-
So when it came to the-
Less than a majority, but nevertheless still held. More people, more justices voted for it than against it.
A majority of the justices agreed that the certain provisions of Act 13 that were declared unconstitutional were unconstitutional. It was three justices that primarily based their decision on Article 1, Section 27. None of the other justices disagreed with the Article 1, Section 27 language that was passed. According to the Chief Justice plurality opinion, it's very clear that decision-making that's undertaken by government officials in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has to be, when it comes to this environmental rights amendment, has to be science-based. It's very clear that you have to be considering individual environmental impacts, but also cumulative environmental impacts. And you have to be looking to protect the quality of our environment, not just for the generations who are here today, but for the generations who are yet to come. And that if there is a violation of the Constitution, the constitutional right to pure water, clean air, and a healthy environment, as articulated by Article 1, Section 27, the people as individuals have a right to bring a legal action to enforce that aspect of the Constitution. And that's in fact what I and my organization and the seven towns did. We went directly, we went with a direct challenge under the Constitution against Act 13 and succeeded. So just in summary, really quick, right? It was made very clear by Chief Justice Castile that the people of Pennsylvania have a right to pure water, clean air, and a healthy environment, that these are inherent and indefeasable rights that are not granted by Pennsylvania's Constitution, but they are recognized by Pennsylvania's Constitution. And by virtue of the fact that they are included in Article 1, Section 27, every government official at every level of government in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has an obligation to honor and protect our environmental rights as they're articulated in the Constitution. That in order to carry forth this obligation, you have to engage in science-based decision-making. That when you are seeking to achieve any of your high priority goals, whether it be jobs, you know, economic health, education, public safety, whatever the other priority it is that you're seeking to achieve, you have to seek to pass a decision or render a decision that at the same time will protect our environmental rights. You can't let those other goals trump our environmental rights. And frankly, the environmental rights don't trump those other goals. You have to try to find a way to accommodate them both at the same time. But that really, by virtue of the Supreme Court decision and a subsequent Commonwealth Court decision, that what we have in Pennsylvania is that, as was recently said, that there is a thumb on the scale in the decision-making process towards environmental protection and restoration. That your obligation is to be thinking about not just what does it mean for the people who are sitting in the room today, but your obligation is to protect environmental quality for the generations to come. And that really raises the bar on the level of thinking and protection that you have to pursue in your decision-making. And I am giving to you not only a copy of the actual plurality opinion, that's so important that I just briefly went through, but I'm also providing you a document, some frequently asked questions that we have put together for municipal officials and citizens who have been asking about this decision and what does it mean. A lot of these frequently asked questions, about half of them, apply to shale gas extraction communities, but there are ones that apply to the broader environmental issue. We also have a special website, ForTheGenerations.org, where we are creating additional materials to talk about this Supreme Court decree and what it means for Pennsylvania officials and citizens. And so if you are interested in learning more over time, you'll be able to find those documents at ForTheGenerations.org.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we'll go to public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports.
Good evening. My name is Christina Peroni and I live in Wayne. I had the pleasure of attending a meeting hosted by the League of Women Voters. Roberta Winters helped to coordinate it with Tish Long and some others. Mr. Haney from PennDOT was there, and there were probably about 30 or 40 citizens there. Commissioner Booker was there and Commissioner Fisher. And it was the first time where there was true interaction between the citizens and this PennDOT official about the effect of what would happen, what is legally allowed regarding traffic and the impact of traffic with Villanova. So, number one, I would ask you all to please watch that video. I believe it's now online. Two, one of the premises of the CICD, or the premise of Villanova's expansion, was that we were going to take the people out, the kids, I think there were 800 or something, out of the neighborhoods and bring them in dorms and therefore cause less traffic. What became very apparent during this traffic conversation is that Villanova has not agreed to cap enrollment. So there are 1,135 more students that are going to be in dorms. And I think since they have refused to cap enrollment, and you have not required them to cap enrollment, I don't know if you're legally allowed to or not, but if this were a truthful situation where they want to get the kids out of the street and they're not going to hurt traffic, because you're not, apparently according to the PennDOT gentleman, you're not allowed to hurt traffic. So that intersection and those intersections already rated F. Okay? So we already fail horribly over there, but to add this retail and to add this 1,135 more students will have a serious effect. So I will ask all of you, as commissioners, to require Villanova 100% to say they will cap enrollment. Number two, it has been really sad that Commissioners Spengler, Curly, Higgins, and Nagels have officially pretty much lockstep voted for anything Villanova wants. And tonight Villanova's coming up for conversation again. I'm not against Villanova, I just would like them to follow the rules. We had a CICD made, which was a new spot zoning so that they can do this expansion. My request to you as protecting the community, we have F ratings on our stoplights, please require an ADA crosswalk, which they have not agreed to do. Require them to add a turning lane, which they have not agreed to do. Require them to synchronize the lights, which they have not agreed to do, and to cap enrollment. That will protect our community. And some of you are up for reelection and it would be nice if you did something for the taxpayers and everybody who drives on those roads.
Christina, you talk about capping enrollment, you mean undergraduate, graduate, or all enrollment?
Yeah, all of enrollment. They said, "We are doing this to pull people out." So if they're just going to add another 1,135, that's not really true. That was the whole basis, we're pulling people out of the street. So I would say all enrollment needs to cap it wherever they are right now. Or own up and tell us the truth, that it's, they're planning to expand enrollment by 1,135. And I believe it was $65,000 a year, and I think I came up with some number like $72 million a year, times, I don't know, 40 years. I think they can afford to add a turning lane, add an elevator to help, you know, disabled people cross the street. There are lots of things they can afford to do, and I think you, as our protectors of our community, should require it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. I wanted to talk at the start of the meeting tonight about something that I witnessed following the March 23, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting. But before we get into that, a little bit of context. March 9, 2015, the Chair of the Radnor Democratic Committee, George Beatty, came before this board and in a now rather widely-reported speech asserted that certain members of the public were engaging a jihad against at least three commissioners, Commissioners Spengler, Commissioner Nagle, and Commissioner Higgins. Now, that jihad comment quite justifiably attracted a lot of attention and Mr. Beatty was properly lambasted for using such an inappropriate term. But the other term that he used repeatedly during his speech was bullying and bullying. And he specifically attributed that to people that address ostensibly Commissioner Spengler, Commissioner Nagle, and Commissioner Higgins. Mr. Beatty did not specifically identify the so-called bullies, or those doing the bullying, but I believe it was pretty clear who he was talking about. Now, the very next Board of Commissioners meeting was March 23, 2015. And at that meeting, stormwater was discussed from a variety of different sources, including Ms. Van Rossum, who spoke earlier tonight, the Delaware Riverkeeper. Now, as Ms. Van Rossum spoke, there weren't too many questions from the dais. That's not terribly surprising because when it comes to issues of stormwater, it would be very difficult to engage Ms. Van Rossum directly, given the wealth of knowledge she has on these topics. She's dedicated basically her entire professional life to understanding, among other things, how water flows. Following the meeting, after the cameras were turned off, I witnessed Jim Higgins interacting with Ms. Van Rossum, and I'm going to get to that in a second, in terms of my personal observations and my personal opinions as to what I witnessed. Before I do that, I'd like to read from an April 6, 2015 news article titled as follows. Pouring on Politics: Radnor Stormwater Proves Controversial, Riverkeeper Leaves Committee. At the conclusion of this article is the following section. After the March 23 BOC meeting, Higgins, who is a rather tall man, confronted Van Rossum, a petite woman. Quote, "I had just engaged in a conversation with Township Manager Bob Zankowski about the next meeting about getting something on the agenda," said Van Rossum. Quote, "He stepped away. All of a sudden, Jim Higgins was inches from my body. He is much taller than me." End quote. Higgins demanded to know if Van Rossum had written a post on the Radnor Environment Matters Facebook page with a flippant response to something this would be Commissioner John Nagle had written. He also wanted to know if she had written a quote "poison pen" end quote letter to one of his constituents. Van Rossum told him that she had not written either. Quote, "He was accusatorily questioning me as to whether I wrote this letter," said Van Rossum. Quote, "I challenged how he was accusing me. I said, 'You're accusing me and trying to intimidate me, and it's wrong. I have to deal with people like you all the time trying to intimidate me.'" Higgins was quote, "Inches from my body, towering over me. I said, quote, 'I don't stand for it.' The incident was quote, 'Clearly inappropriate, very hostile,' she said." Higgins, meanwhile, admitted that he had spoken to Van Rossum after the meeting. Quote, "I spoke with her," end quote, he said. Quote, "We had a conversation. I don't think I got too close to her." Now, here's what I witnessed. I witnessed Jim Higgins deliberately walk over to Maya Van Rossum and get inches from her face with a furious expression on his and start clearly a very aggressive dialogue. The only word I could adequately describe it as is menacing. Menacing.
You have one more minute.
In fact, I dare say that if that incident was caught on camera, Jim Higgins' political career is finished within 12 hours. It was that outrageous. Now, this leads to a larger question. Ms. Van Rossum doesn't need me to stand up for her. I think we've seen earlier tonight that Ms. Van Rossum is perfectly capable of taking care of herself. Incredibly articulate, incredibly strong. If Jim Higgins was willing to do that to somebody so outspoken, so erudite, so articulate, the question now is, is that something that he is doing with other people?
Please wrap it up. Your time is up. Your time is up, please.
Okay, well, I'll wrap it up then. Thank you for the invitation to wrap it up.
You have like, you have like 10 seconds.
I have like 10 seconds to wrap it up.
Wrap it up.
This is rather important, by the way, in terms of how commissioners interact with members of the public. Ultimately, whatever Commissioner Higgins has done or chooses to do in terms of reaching out to Ms. Van Rossum, in my opinion, is totally irrelevant. What's important is, is that members of the public know that you have a commissioner that is acting this type of way. And I dare say, it is more than a little coincidental that this behavior is exhibited by Jim Higgins only a couple scant weeks after the Ethics Board makes the determination that John Nagle saying, "Somebody shoot you" in a public meeting is somehow not inconsistent with his obligations pursuant to Radnor's charter.
Thank you very much.
No. Thank you, Commissioner Spengler, and thank you, I'm sure, for speaking with Jim Higgins and reminding him that getting inches from a woman's face, particularly a petite woman, he's well over six feet tall, is not an appropriate way to conduct themselves. I'm sure you've done that as parliamentarian of this meeting. I hope you will continue to do that.
It wasn't anything happening at the meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'll speak with you all later.
Yeah, sure.
Excuse me.
Is there any other-
Yeah, Bob, do we-
No, we're on public comments, though. We're on public comment.
We don't have, excuse me, excuse me. Do we have, we don't have television? I don't recall us talking about it.
Is there any other public comment?
Is there television?
Is there any other public comment?
When, is this, there's nothing on our monitor right here.
We're on public comment.
This is being recorded. Is that what you're talking about?
Thank you. Sorry, Rich. My name is Jane Gally. I'm the 7th Ward on Barclayden Road. I would just like to ask, or maybe this will come up later when the Villanova does a presentation. I was looking over the plans of the parking lot area and whether there's going to be, I see there's going to be rampage on the, it looks like it's on the Alwin side of the walkway, but I don't see anything on the plans, and my husband didn't either, and he's in construction.
This will come up when we're discussing Villanova.
Would you rather have it then?
Yes.
Okay, never mind.
The process of this public comment is for people who can't stay for the meeting to comment at that time.
Okay, I didn't know whether-
It's been abused by a number of people over and over again, and I'm sad, you know, the meeting's going longer because people who don't leave the meeting, they stay, you know.
Okay.
But if you have someone comment, we have plenty of comments, you're in the process.
Okay, I didn't know whether there'll be later commentary area.
Yep, plenty of it.
That's fine, thank you.
Nobody meant to imply that you were abusing the process. Please don't, please don't interpret it that way.
Mr. President, if I can, to answer Rich's question. Yes, it is going out tonight, the monitors, there's a piece that Jim's waiting for to replacement. So if you're referring to the screen, the monitors in front of you, yes, the meeting is going out live and it's not interrupted.
Yeah. All right, now we're going to go to-
I'm sorry, can I just-
I'm sorry, you've been at the mic.
I just want to acknowledge for the record that I saw Commissioner Higgins this past week, and he gave me a genuine and heartfelt apology, and I appreciated that. That's all.
Well, I'd just like to say that every week we hear a different tune, 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 and the song is just getting out of control. So let's move on to Public Works and Engineering. The first item is 145 King of Pressure Road. I'm going to go get the plans, I left them in the other room.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a presentation in caucus format by the applicant Biomed Realty Trust, and the project is redevelopment of the site at 145 King of Pressure Road, and the proposed-
Mr. Higgins, before we start, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could we switch the order? It's okay with Biomed if we switch the order and have Villanova go first?
It's okay with me. Does anybody else have a, okay, sure. Let's go ahead then with Villanova. Villanova University is here to present plans in caucus session, which means there will be no formal vote, but there will be discussion and audience participation. And the project is to build a dormitory complex on the south side of Lancaster Avenue, across from the main campus near the St. Thomas of Villanova Church, to build a performing arts center, to build retail shops, and to build a new parking garage. We have previously considered aspects of the plan in zoning context. In March of 2014, we allowed for a special zoning district to be created at the site to allow this and projects, I'm sorry, not just at the site, but at other locations where we have universities or colleges. And, yeah, and then after that zoning action, we had a conditional use proceeding, which was finished up last fall. So now the applicant is here under our subdivision land development ordinance to present detailed plans. Go ahead.
Before we begin, I'd just like to say that I'm recusing myself because I have a conflict of interest, and I will not be participating in this discussion.
Yes, this is a preliminary plan. This is Nick Canelia for Villanova University. This is a preliminary plan, this is the caucus hearing for that preliminary plan. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was approval on this. We're here this evening, you're well familiar with Alex Tweedy, the project engineer. He will basically go through the review letters and the plan itself. I believe you're already very familiar with the plan itself. You've been seeing it for probably three or four years now. But Alex will go through the review letters and basically saying if there is an issue or some discussion on one of the points of the review letters, Alex will discuss it.
Thank you, Nick. Alex Tweedy, Naveen Noel, the civil engineer for the project. As Nick noted, the plan has been through the land development process. It's the same plan you've seen through the CICD proceedings, and we've worked through with staff on a variety of review letters, had some very good conversations with the Planning Commission, and last week obtained a recommendation for approval of the plans. We wanted to run through some summaries of the plans themselves and then address, as Nick said, some of the comments in the review letter that we'd like to bring to your attention from some discussions we've had. I'd like to start out just generally by giving an overview of stormwater for the project. I know that there was a lot of discussion during the conditional use process on what this project can do for stormwater and some specific conditions in the conditional use decision to go meet minimum ordinance criteria, isn't it, the extent feasible to go above and beyond to provide even more stormwater. We've worked closely with the Friends to Preserve Radnor, DEP, the Delaware Riverkeeper, and had many very- and had many very productive conversations at DEP's offices with all the interested parties, and we believe we've come up with a great stormwater plan for the project. All the shareholders involved in those meetings, I think, at the last meeting came away, very positive on the plan we're putting forward, and we've addressed many of the concerns raised, and I wanted to just give a general overview of what's being proposed. I think the easiest plan to reference in all the plan sets, there's a campus wide map that shows all the phases of the project. Currently, what's being proposed is broken up into what we'll call three drainage areas for stormwater. West of Church Walk driveway is the West Lancaster parking. That all drains towards Route 30 and 320 intersection. Then, the center of the development where the housing is and the front half of the garage all drains into Eithan Avenue and flows down Eithan Avenue into South Campus and then through the South Campus basin that exists today. And then the second half of Pike Field and the existing softball field all drains to the southeast corner to an existing basin that was built for the press box project for Pike Softball Field, and then discharges into the railroad. Globally, the project meets the intent of, or meets the requirements of the conditional use hearing for going above and beyond the minimum standards of the volume control for the project. So we exceed the one-inch requirement as requested during the conditional use hearing. It meets all the required peak rate detention facilities required by the baseline township code and goes above and beyond with some innovative design practices that we've worked through with the meetings with DEP. The one area where we were able to get a lot of volume control with an innovative practice was we've agreed with the rooftops of the housing, since they don't have any of the pollutants that are typical on roadways or parking lots and it's relatively clean water, we are actually collecting that water in large underground cisterns in the courtyard of the building and using that to support the cooling towers for the building, which uses actually an incredible amount of water, especially during the summer, which I was not aware of. So there's an innovative capture and reuse portion of this project, which captures a lot of that stormwater. Inside the housing for the plazas, the courtyard plazas for all the sidewalk and some of the roadways, there's additional rain gardens sprinkled throughout all the green space that's being added into the parking lots, which gives some additional water quality benefits and volume control. And then the remainder is captured in basins along the parking area. The Pike Garage utilizes the existing detention system that was built for the Pike Softball Field in the same manner that it functions today with some improvements that we're doing to improve its functionality with the increases in technology over the years with some additional water quality benefits. And then from some concerns raised both by Commissioner Fisher and during the Butler Annex project that you guys reviewed, there was an item noted for some concerns on a PennDOT pipe that cuts across Pike Softball Field today that is, receives no stormwater control. Villanova University, as part of this project, has agreed to intercept that pipe, which is runoff from PennDOT that's not part of our project, and actually go above and beyond and collect that stormwater and provide additional stormwater control to address the concerns of water quality coming off Route 30 and concerns from drainage in the neighbors. So we believe with all those portions of the project working together, we've addressed all the concerns that everyone's asked us to look at, been very successful with DEP and put together a real strong stormwater plan for the project. There are a few stormwater comments in Gana Fleming's review letter, and the majority of them are will complies. The only item that we want to bring to your attention, which is, it's still a will comply, but it's a clarification with Roger, that some of the wording in his letter just referenced an incorrect storm. It says the basins have to drain down and within four days for the 100-year stormwater volume. There's a correction with that that we worked out with Roger. It's actually the infiltration volume, which is that one-inch or one-and-a-half-inch storm that we just spoke about. That's what needs to draw down in 96 hours. So we are going to will, we do comply with that standard, and we believe we actually already meet that, the intent of that comment. The one item also in his letter that's noted that, and where you've gone back and forth with Roger on this, whether a formal waiver needs to be requested or not, and if the board feels that a formal waiver does need to be granted, we hereby request that waiver. But there's some existing nonconformities on the parking stall dimensions for some of the existing parking lots, specifically at Stone Hall and Feral Hall down at the west end of the West Lancaster parking, and then also within the visitor lot that's directly adjacent to the pedestrian, proposed pedestrian bridge. Those parking lots are not being touched by a portion, by the proposed project. The visitor lot is being reconnected to, the access roads are being fixed, but the physical lot itself is not being changed. And there were some comments about upgrading those to the code standards for aisle width and parking stall size. We are not proposing to modify those parking lots per their provision. We believe it's an existing nonconformity, but if the board feels that a waiver actually has to be granted about that, we request that waiver. On the Pike Garage, there was a comment regarding the building length calculations for the project. The standard that was written into the CICD code, and I think we just want to clarify some of the wording in Roger's letter, but the standard of the CICD code when it was written was that no single facade shall exceed 180 feet before it's interrupted by a minimum 6-by-24-inch facade break for the full height of the building. We comply with that provision of the CICD code, whereas at any point when we get to no greater than 180 feet of the facade length, there is a architectural break of the required dimensions for both the Pike Garage and the Performing Arts Center. So we will provide some additional dimensions on the plan, but we just wanted to confirm that, that the code or the plan meets the 180-foot facade length provision of, of the CICD ordinance. And also relating to the garage, there was a comment in there about a three-story restriction on the garage, which was actually, that's a provision of different zoning code standards in the township, but not the CICD code. The CICD code only regulates height specifically. So this is a 38-foot garage, but it doesn't have a provision for a maximum number of stories. So we just wanted to clarify that. And then moving on to Gilmore's letter related to traffic, there was some commentary in the letters about reviewing with the township a possible relocation of Church Walk driveway location as currently shown on the plans, which was originally on the conditional use hearing, it was directly adjacent to the bridge. And then during those hearings and some PennDOT meetings, we agreed to move it to the other side of the visitor lot to get more separation from the bridge. Amy's letter requested evaluating moving it further west. We've spoken with her since that letter was issued, discussed the merits of, of that review, and we both agree that the current location that's proposed on this plan is the appropriate location for the bridge. And Amy, PennDOT, and the project team all agree that the Church Walk should stay where it is. So we wanted to clarify that. And then also, there was a comment about coming down Eithan Avenue. This is a 50-foot-long taper. The PennDOT typical standard is 75 feet. Remember, this isn't a PennDOT road, this is a township road, and we've discussed the specifics of that and the unique situation of, of the turn lanes along that road, and we both feel that even though 50 feet is a little bit non-traditional, it's appropriate for this use and this location. In the Ratu letter, there was a question about, and it relates to the conditional use hearing for evaluating whether additional plantings could be placed underneath the SEPTA right-of-way. And there was a letter that was issued from SEPTA concerning their standards for additional landscape material within that right-of-way. As stated in that letter, you cannot plant within 32 feet of their power lines in either direction, and we've presented this to the Planning Commission, but we just wanted to bring it to your attention as well. Going 32 feet to the south takes us onto private property, and going 32 feet to the north takes us into the railroad itself. So, in accordance with that letter, we are not able to provide any additional landscaping along that frontage and comply with SEPTA's provisions of that 32-foot clear zone. So we just wanted to clarify that. Also, in Ratu's letter, they, they asked for some additional information about site furnishings and some additional plans requested. The site furnishings are already shown on the plans that were submitted and the details provided on the landscaping plans for the project. So we believe we've already complied with providing the necessary information for them to review that property. And then leading to the letters related to Church Walk specifically that were discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, there was some questions about showing a 20-foot buffer for the majority of West Lancaster parking and the visitor lot and pedestrian bridge area. There is one area that they noted that was below 20 feet, and we discussed this with, we actually, we discussed this with the Planning Commission at the time, but that moves into the CO zoning district, which actually has a different standard than the CICD, which is actually only a 10-foot buffer. What we did for the majority of West Lancaster parking is provided that 20-foot buffer because we know that a big concern of the neighbors was to preserve a lot of the existing trees and increase the buffer. There is a specific point right at the SEPTA platform where we're providing and preserving SEPTA parking that's required to be preserved for their access to the station. There are two parking spots in that isolated area that are closer than that 20 feet, but we believe it's compliant because the CO zoning district actually only requires the 10. So once again, the wording requested the 20-foot. We are providing it everywhere but two spots that have to be preserved or provided to SEPTA. And there was also a commentary about some steep slopes being shown on the SEPTA, or on the, on the bridge provision, specifically in the intersection of the bridge as it ties up into the church plaza. There's an existing landscape slope there that is a steep slope area. We've discussed this area with Roger. We believe, and we presented to him that there are provisions in the code that allow driveway realignments and driveway, and roadway, walkway, and driveway alignments to be exempted from that steep slopes if no alternate alignment is feasible. That plaza expansion is a, is a driveway widening for some issues with turning movements in front of that church during events where they're trying to get vehicles to pass through there. So the expansion of that roadway, though it's in an area of steep slopes, is actually exempted or a permitted use in the steep slopes because of it not having a feasible alternative in alignment in that area. And then, there was some discussion based on the Ratu letter related to Church Walk on pedestrian access up to the driveway and providing the necessary crosswalks and access to the bridge. As conditioned in the conditional use hearing, there was a provision subject to PennDOT review, which we believe PennDOT supports, is maintaining at least one acreade crosswalk to be able to, at Church Walk, to go from north to south, but fencing the remainder of the north side of the roadway to prohibit or to force people to use the bridge instead of them being able to cross that grade and just walk up to campus through the slope. So we've provided that fencing along the roadway. There was some question on pedestrian access to the bridge, or pedestrian access from the northern sidewalk of Route 30 up to the church. What we've discussed with the Planning Commission is there is a driveline there with a gate that's going to be replaced to block pedestrians and would be open for vehicles when necessary during church events, but very limited access. There was a request from the Planning Commission to install an additional walkway there, which we do not believe is required, we do not propose to provide, and the parking for the church has the accessibility to use the pedestrian bridge to access the church, or if you have limited mobility, you're able to park on campus as we presented to the, to the Planning Commission. So we believe the plan that's proposed as current complies with the requests of this board during the conditional use hearing as far as incentivizing the use of the pedestrian bridge and discouraging the use of the acreade crosswalk along Route 30 in that location. And there was also a provision about some ADA walkways that we'll work through with Ratu, but we disagree with one of their comments as far as providing a walkway from a parking lot west of Moriarty Hall to the bridge, which is not required because the ADA parking for the bridge is provided in the SEPTA parking and the visitor parking lot, not, not in Moriarty. So we'll work out that comment with them, but we just wanted to bring that to your attention. The other items to note where there were some waivers that were requested and discussed with the board, as we previously noted, it's a question of whether or not a waiver is or is not required, but if so, we request a waiver to maintain the existing nonconformities on the parking stall dimensions for Stone Hall, Feral Hall, and the visitor lot and its existing conditions. And then there was another question or discussion, and this has been an issue on, on some other projects which you all, you've discussed at time with, with Roger and the Planning Commission. But there's a provision in your code that in a parking lot area where there's parking and a driveline, that driveline is 22 feet. And then for entry drives, it has to be 25 feet. But it doesn't speak to a driveline through a parking lot that doesn't have parking adjacent to it. And there's some ambiguity in the code as to whether or not that needs to be 22 or 25. We believe it needs to be 22, but if the board rule, views that a waiver should be issued, once again, we, we request that waiver. And to be clear, the area we're talking about, our entry and exit drive is going to be Church Walk, which is just off this sheet. I have some other plans if you'd like to see it in more detail, but Church Walk, where you actually access Route 30, which I believe is the entry and exit drive for the project, is 36 feet wide. So it does meet that 25-foot standard. Then when you come in Church Walk Drive, you're in a 22-foot drive aisle in between parking, which is dedicated to SEPTA. So this driveline is 22 feet wide. You then pass through a driveline that doesn't have parking, and then, once again, you enter into the parking lot for our project, which is 22 feet wide again, which is code compliant. The comment Roger was noting is to whether or not this portion that doesn't have parking along it needs to be widened to 25 feet or not. We don't believe it does, but once again, for the abundance of caution, we formally request the waiver to allow it to remain at 22 feet because we don't want to be 22 feet on either end and then widen out to 25 in the middle. We don't believe there's any value to that extra width. I don't believe, during the Planning Commission, Amy and Roger didn't have any objections to that width, and one of the main points of both this area and a similar situation that occurs on the West Lancaster parking with a driveline without any parking along it is the preservation of trees along the railroad for buffering of the Aldwin neighbors. That extra three feet would encroach into the trees and the root system and, and make it more difficult to, to preserve those existing trees. So we request that waiver both in this area, in between the visitor lot and the rear of the parking in the rear of the housing, and then on the west side in West Lancaster parking. There's almost the exact same situation where you come down Church Walk, and then it's 22 feet without any parking until, until you get to this point where it's 22 And then the remaining waiver that's requested, which was already brought up, the, the meeting with PennDOT that we had last week, related to a waiver request that we've requested from the Planning Commission on the southwest corner of the Route 30 and Eithan Avenue intersection. The code requires a 35-foot radius in that location. We're requesting a waiver to use a 25-foot radius. We're requesting a waiver to use a 25-foot radius. The reason for that waiver and what was discussed during the conditional use hearing was the goal to preserve the pedestrian crossing time at this intersection to keep traffic efficiency at the level it is today with not stealing car time to give more time for pedestrians, but to try and keep that 26-second pedestrian, all red pedestrian scramble phase equivalent to what it is today. We would need to keep a 64-foot walkway in that location. The 25-foot radius allows us to do that while also allowing the delivery trucks that Villanova uses to sufficiently make the right turn to access this facility. Any radius larger than that or any right turn lane added here increases the length of this crosswalk and will steal time from vehicular movement through this intersection. And unless there's any questions from me, I'd like to turn it over to Frank Tavani, the traffic engineer, to discuss this situation a little bit more.
Thank you, Alex. I might need some assistance with switching over to the laptop instead of the camera. So in discussing the right turn lane issue and also the right turn radius issue, we thought would be appropriate to show you some existing conditions as well as the impact of different radius combinations. And what you're going to see is a modification of the slideshow that was presented Tuesday night to Mr. Hanny and also members of the audience. The modifications I'll describe in detail and basically flow from that conversation that we had with Mr. Hanny. However, this slide is exactly the same as what was shown Tuesday night, and this is the existing conditions at the intersection of Lancaster and Eithen. Lancaster is shown here essentially left to right, and Eithen is essentially top to bottom. There are currently three eastbound lanes in this, shown in this area here, an exclusive left and two through lanes, the rightmost of which is a shared through right lane. Each of those lanes is 10 feet wide, and also the two westbound through lanes in this location are 10 feet wide, which means the existing cartway is 50 feet wide total. There are somewhat offset stop bars, which exist on all four approaches, as highlighted in yellow on the eastbound and northbound approaches. And the longest crosswalk at the intersection is this crosswalk, the eastbound crosswalk. It's 64 feet presently, measured along its center from where it intercepts the existing radius, which is 17 feet approximately, to where it intercepts kind of the, the point of tangency between the northwest corner radius and the straight section of pavement. Since this is an all-red PED scramble phase, the way this works is you find the longest crosswalk, and that is what you base PED clearance times on, as well as other components of the PED phase, such as the, the flashing walk phase and the all-red phase to go to the next phase. Currently, the all-red PED phase is 26 seconds long, as shown in that last bullet point. This slide is also identical to what was presented Tuesday night, and this reflects what are currently shown on the plans which were submitted. Again, we are maintaining three eastbound lanes. However, a very early comment from PennDOT was that the lanes need to be wider. They're 10 feet wide today, and what PennDOT requested is the outermost through lanes be 12 feet wide, the innermost through lanes be 11 feet wide, and the left turn lane in the center on either side of the intersection is 10 feet wide. So right off the bat, the intersection's already getting wider to accommodate those requested widths. So we're going from 50 feet, which is shown in grayscale, to 56 feet. And that, that would have the effect of making the crosswalk longer if it weren't for the attempt that we show on the current plans to essentially rotate the crosswalk in a counterclockwise fashion, holding the bottom end of the crosswalk more or less fixed and swinging the northern end a little bit more to the west. This is the existing Villanova University sign. I'm sure you can imagine in your mind, this is where the existing crosswalk ends, and it's a fairly significant deflection that's necessary to maintain that 64-foot width. And that 64-foot width is also a function of the radius. You can see in grayscale where the 17-foot radius is, and the current plans show a 50% increase in that radius. We're adding another eight feet to the existing 17-foot approximate radius, bringing it back here at 25 feet. That has the effect of also making the crosswalk longer, and that was what was shown in the currently submitted plans. Incidentally, one component of all these different variations is the northbound left turn stop bar does get pushed back, and that's to accommodate the swing of trucks that are going eastbound, southbound. This is the first slide that's slightly different from what was shown on Tuesday. The reason why it's different is because one of the comments that Mr. Hanny publicly stated was, "We really can't get too far west with this crosswalk. We have to recognize some reality of where pedestrians are crossing." And pedestrians typically, pardon me, pedestrians, pedestrians typically cross, they take the shortest path possible. They take a beeline. So if they're going from this sidewalk or this radius corner, they're basically going to try and go to that corner. So the, the preliminary feedback, the early feedback from PennDOT is that we're probably going to have to strike a compromise between what was proposed here, that alignment, and what the existing crosswalk is, and essentially meet in the middle, so we line up with the existing edge of sidewalk, which is more or less where the existing edge of the sign is. And in doing so, the sidewalk, the crosswalk does get longer with the 25-foot radius and with the three eastbound lanes. In fact, it gets five feet longer, goes from 64 feet to 69 feet. And what that means is the clearance interval, the clearance component, the flashing don't walk phase of the PED scramble phase has to get a little bit longer. And essentially, the existing 26-second PED scramble phase will get about 5 to 10% longer, depending on how PennDOT decides to round fractions of seconds as a result of this preliminary early feedback. Next, we looked at, as you heard from Mr., Mr. Tweedy, what happens if we make the radius larger? When we go from 25 feet to the code required 35 feet, which is effectively doubling the radius that exists today. Stop doing that. If we do that, and we maintain the north, the northern end of the crosswalk in the same location as we've already been suggested to keep it, the crosswalk now becomes 74 feet long. So it gets five feet longer from the five feet longer it's already potentially going to be, or 10 feet longer than the existing condition, which means the all-red PED scramble phase gets about 10 to 15% longer than what currently exists. I should say that the cycle length of this intersection has 120 seconds, and that time is then divvied up to different phases, whether it's the Lancaster through traffic, or the Eithen traffic, or the Lancaster left-turning traffic, which has its own protected phase, or this PED scramble phase. So if one phase gets longer, another phase gets shorter. You keep that 120 seconds constant, and as you've heard from some people in the audience at previous meetings, this intersection does have some constraints, and it does operate at Level Service E overall during certain times of the day, D at others, and F even at others, depending on what events are taking place. So any small change in a few seconds here and a few seconds there, although it may sound trivial, can actually result in some fairly significant differences in levels of service, depending on where that time is borrowed from to shift to the, the subject phase, in this case, the all-red PED scramble phase.
Could I, I, I need to have one clarification.
Yes.
So I, I think I'm following everything. The current PED scramble is for 26 seconds.
Out of 120, yes.
Out of 120. If you, if you extend that longest portion of the crosswalk, which is the eastern side, western side from north to south.
Yes.
If you extend it unreasonably, are you saying that you can no longer give the pedestrians only 26 seconds? You have to give them longer time? And if so, is that a PennDOT requirement, that there's, there's a relationship between length of the crossing and the time that a pedestrian has?
Yes and yes. Any increase in this crosswalk will translate to a longer clearance interval of the pedestrian phase. In traffic engineering vernacular, a phase is made up of intervals. So there's the, the walk interval, which lasts about nine seconds today, and then there's the flashing don't walk interval, which is called the clearance interval, and that is based on a calculation as derived by the longest crosswalk at this intersection. You basically take that dimension, divide it by 3.5 feet per second, and what you're left with is the clearance interval. And then there's typically a two-second all-red interval where no one goes as added safety.
That's coming back to me. I think you covered this many meetings ago.
Many times.
The 3.5 seconds is a, is a calcula, is a standard, is a standard that PennDOT uses for a person's stride or steps. Is that right?
That's right. And that's actually a relatively newish standard. It used to be faster at four feet per second. When this intersection is changed, it will have to reflect the modern standards, not the standards that were in place the last time it was constructed or the timing. So that's actually working against it as well, not to mention the fact that we've already been told by PennDOT that we need to increase the cartway width by more than 10% and go from 50 feet that exists to 56 feet. So the added lane width, the increased radius that we're already offering, and the slower walk time standard, all basically conspire to make it more challenging to maintain that 26-second scramble time, but we think that we've been able to get as close to that as possible, either 26 or possibly 27, if this is the final alignment of the crosswalk at 69 feet. But it certainly won't be significantly longer. It's going to be as close as possible.
And one, I didn't want to stop the flow here, but one thing that cannot be altered is the 120 seconds total?
Well, that certainly can be.
Can be altered.
That, that's something that was selected years ago when PennDOT did a corridor study of several intersections along the Route 30 corridor. And cycle lengths are usually chosen as a function of total volumes, speed, and the desire to try and maintain as much bandwidth or progression along a corridor as possible. If you have very short cycle lengths, they're typically found at intersections that don't have as much volume and where bandwidth is not as much of an issue. So I, I don't think it's likely that that cycle length is going to change as a result of this project or any project. I think that was carefully determined and will be maintained.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes.
You, you have, you're claiming that there could be a 10 to 15% increase in the, in the walk phase or the overall time?
No, of, of the all-red PED phase, not the overall time, just the PED phase.
Good. So can you give me the numbers there? Because I, I mean, I'm taking the original 26-second, and I'm adding, we're going from 64 feet to 74 feet, and are you using 3.5 feet per second?
Correct. If you divide, if you subtract 74 from 64, you get about 10 feet. You divide that by 3.5, that results in about three additional seconds, depending on how it's rounded by PennDOT, and then three divided by 26 is somewhere in the range of 10 to 15%.
Okay.
And that's every cycle, every...
Well, not every cycle, because the PED phase is on demand. There is a button.
During peak hours with the kind of PED crossings that we documented, I think that's safe to say that virtually every cycle will have a PED request. During off-peak periods, it's less likely, but there's a lot of crossings here, so you're right. I mean, it is on demand, but I think during peak periods, which is the subject of the traffic study, it's, it's more often than not.
But we, we have to decide whether three seconds is worth it to give the added, these standards are, are there to improve visibility, they're there to improve the flow of vehicles around the turns, and, you know, the standard is 35 feet, and we're being asked to make it 25 feet.
Well, let's finish the presentation.
In a place that has a lot of pedestrians, so we have to decide whether or not this is, is it worth it? Is the three seconds worth it?
And the best way you can decide is, let me finish the presentation so you could see all the data.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So where we left off was increasing it from 25-foot radius to 35-foot radius means we go from 64 feet to 74 feet and the numbers we just described. One of the comments from the planning commission last Monday, the, the planning commission recognized last Monday that it cannot require or compel a right turn lane because this is really a PennDOT issue. However, they did issue, they asked Mr. Norsini to issue a memo to Mr. Hanny saying that they feel strongly that a right turn lane would be a benefit, and they consider it. And we think it's important that the commissioners recognize what that would then be if that were provided in addition to the 35-foot radius. And that's what is depicted on the screen now. So again, we're going from 50 feet to 56 feet, no matter what. If we add a new exclusive right turn lane, which is four lanes total on the eastbound approach, we now go up to 69 feet. And if in concert with that, we increase the radius, which is currently shown all the way out here, to twice its size, to 35 feet radius, and we maintain that same northern terminus of the eastbound crosswalk as we have in all previous scenarios, we go from 64 feet to an 88-foot crosswalk, which is an increase of 24 feet, which is significant and would mean that the all-red PED phase becomes about 25 to 30% longer. I should point out that there are currently no exclusive right turn lanes on any approach of this intersection, so the whole issue of right turns on red has not yet been examined by PennDOT or the township at this intersection. It's my professional opinion that if this right turn lane were constructed, that a right turn on red restriction, posted restriction would probably be erected, mainly because since there's only one southbound receiving lane on Eithen Avenue, and since during the Eithen Avenue phase, there is traffic that's waiting to head southbound, I, I really don't think that there's even the possibility that right turning traffic that's on red could even find a gap, and I think PennDOT would recognize that. Secondly, I think even though there is a PED scramble phase, there are a lot of pedestrians that sometimes stand on the corners waiting to cross the street, and in recognition of that, I'm not really sure the comfort level that I or, or PennDOT might have with encouraging traffic to turn right on red at this particular location. And even if that wasn't the case, I think as a practical matter, the, the ability for people to make a right turn on red, whether it's during the left turn leading phase on Lancaster Avenue, which again is only fed into one receiving lane, southbound, or the Eithen Avenue phase, means that it's probably not going to happen. And just in, in terms of context, you know, you might have a hard time, as I sometimes do, visualizing what 24-feet-more distance really is. This is a very cryptic aerial image using a distance measuring app of the intersection of King of Prussia Road, which you'll probably hear more about later tonight, and Lancaster Avenue. And on the eastbound approach of Lancaster Avenue, which does not have a crosswalk today, that's approximately 85 feet wide. So that's how wide Lancaster Avenue would get on a skewed angle in front of a fairly active university, pedestrian-crossing university. Another thing to keep in mind, just with that incremental increase is, if you look to my left, approximately where Mr. Osborne is sitting is about 25 feet away from me, so that's how much longer that crosswalk would get. And if you can visualize what the intersection looks like today, that's a fairly significant increase. So in summary, what the applicant's currently proposing is a 50% increase to the radius. Some planning commission members commented that one of the problems with the right turn today is, it is a skewed angle. The traffic has to slow down significantly in order to turn right, and it's either inconvenient or inefficient for that right turning traffic as a result of the angle and speed. Plus, there's the added concern that any through motorist behind the right turning motorist has the potential of getting rear-ended or just has pressure from the through motorist behind them. Increasing that radius 50% from 17 feet to 25 feet will help to alleviate that. We certainly don't want the traffic going too fast either because of the reasons noted earlier with the pedestrian presence, and that's mentioned in the second bullet point. We're, again, we're attempting to maintain the crosswalk at 64 feet or less, which will minimize pedestrian exposure to Route 30. It's not all about traffic efficiency and levels of service. It's about having pedestrians exposed in a cartway. And even though this is an all-red PED scramble phase, which is the highest level of safety, the standard today is moving toward complete streets, keeping pedestrians out of cartways if possible, and certainly not making crosswalks any longer than they need to be. Pedestrian pass and stop bars must be kept realistic. I already touched on that, and Mr. Hanny gave us feedback on Tuesday. No turn on red restrictions are likely, and the eastbound right turn volumes are predicted to be relatively low, which shown in the bottom center of this image are taken directly from the traffic study. It shows about 23 vehicles are predicted to make that right turn during the AM peak hour, which is around 2.5% of the total, and about 92 in the afternoon. And in summary, it looks like the benefits of a 35-foot radius and/or an eastbound right turn lane are minimal, but the complications that arise from either are not. I also would just like to end on the fact that this is one corner of one intersection that we've been spending a lot of time talking about, and what's possibly gotten a little bit lost in this discussion are the many transportation improvements that are part of this project. I think I heard in the, in the hallway last time that, you know, even the smallest applicant includes a right turn lane, you know, why can't PennDOT, why can't Villanova provide a right turn lane here? We're actually providing three of them. There's actually a, a new exclusive right turn lane that's proposed where the right-in, right-out is shown to the left of the West Lancaster lot. There's one that's shown at Church Walk, the relocated Church Walk, and then there's one that's at the PAC driveway, which is shown right here. And all of those will serve the benefit of getting right turning traffic out of the through traffic flow, and they're all appropriate at that location, mainly because there's not significant PED activity, and also because the volumes are higher at each of those locations. There's, I, I believe at last count, eight currently unregulated driveways that are being closed, and the friction that's caused by left turns in and left turns out, those driveways will be ameliorated by the fact that they're being closed and replaced with a right-in, right-out access, which is then shared from behind with the relocated Church Walk. Of course, everyone knows about the pedestrian bridge. And at the intersection of Eithen itself, we're making significant improvements. This existing eastbound left turn lane is being approximately doubled in length. The westbound left turn lane's being tripled. You can just read and go on from there. So I just want to make sure that the commissioners are well aware that it's not this one right turn that is being pushed back. It's being pushed back for a good reason, and there's many other improvements that are... many other improvements that are being offered as part of this project. So, that concludes the presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. So, I saw from Roger in your memo, you only had one waiver identified, is that correct?
Initially, yes, and then talking through some of these issues, it was Villanova's option as to whether they would request additional waivers or not, or comply.
Very good. And has the Planning Commission weighed in on those waivers that aren't in your memo? I don't know who's that's...
Yes, the two waivers that aren't noted in Roger's letter are the 22-foot versus the 25-foot, and that wasn't originally requested as a waiver because like we discussed, it's our opinion that a waiver isn't actually required, they're allowed to be 22 feet, but we did request that from the Planning Commission. They didn't put it in their motion, but during the discussion, they did say that they don't have an issue with that waiver request. And then the other one noted was the existing nonconformities, which once again, I think it's an interpretation issue as to whether or not a waiver is actually required, but if the board feels that a waiver has to be issued to preserve those nonconformities, we're adding that to the list at this time.
Okay, and have you evaluated these? Do you have an opinion on whether they're, are they accurate that a waiver is not required?
Well, as Alex mentioned earlier, with the 22 versus the 25-foot for the drive aisle, the code is a little ambiguous on that, and I took the conservative approach to request the 25-foot drive aisle. I don't oppose a 22-foot drive aisle in this situation because they have, the 22 feet is consistent through where the parking areas are. So, where there is no parking adjacent to that, I believe, like, again, the code is ambiguous with that, but if that's considered a drive aisle, that becomes 25 feet. So, they'd be asking for the relief to move that down to 22.
So, at the next iteration, can we get some kind of summary of these with staff opinion on those? Because it was still a little, you know, there was a lot of going back and forth between what waivers were identified where. Is that something that we can have?
Sure. I mean, I believe that's, whether waiver is requested or not, what they're asking is they're asking the board whether you would consider that being a waiver or not, I can certainly...
Yeah, but I see, I'm kind of deferring, I'm asking you to tell me whether that's a waiver, so...
If I can weigh in, we'll go ahead and we will actually have the waivers that Villanova will be asking for, and then also then we'll weigh in on whether or not we would recommend if we would approve those.
I have to say, I think it's a mistake to come to this board and ask this board if this is something that requires a waiver. My opinion is that you should determine what you think you need a waiver for, and then staff should determine whether that's appropriate, and then we make the decision. Because I'm not in a position to give an opinion on something that it isn't clear to me whether it's allowed in the code or not. So, that's just kind of like my general opinion on waivers, or the waivers that you've requested. The curb radius waiver, certainly, we had this discussion at great length many times over the conditional use application. I still very much believe that it's problematic to make that intersection larger, so the logic of the waiver there makes sense to me. I don't know if it still makes sense to others, but for me, it's the same position that I had last time. I'm certainly sensitive to your position, or Frank mentioned the concept of complete streets, so the idea of making a major pedestrian intersection larger, in my opinion, is opposite of the direction that planning is going to, planning is trying to make pedestrian streets tighter, not larger. So, again, we've had that discussion. For me, I'm still, I still believe it's important to keep that intersection as narrow as we can, and then even just the, one can feel the difference in scale when one goes to the intersection of King of Prussia and Route 30, that's, the scale at that intersection is considerably different than the scale of the intersection at Eithon, and in my opinion, it would be a mistake to try to take the scale that is at King of Prussia Road and try to put that at Eithon Avenue. So, and then, I didn't follow, there was talk of moving the location of the pedestrian bridge?
No, of the Church Walk driveway, and we've worked that out with Amy, we just wanted to note that it was noted in the letter and bring to your attention that it's staying where it's currently proposed.
All right. And then, is there talk of taking, eliminating the sidewalk on the northern side of Route 30?
No, there was a request from the Planning Commission to build a sidewalk up the Service Drive that's currently gated with the yellow gate at the north side. As part of the conditional use, we're required to replace that gate with a gate that's going to block pedestrians so that you can't shortcut the bridge to go up through. There was discussion during the Planning Commission on the condition from this board during the conditional use hearing of the complete fence along the north side of the roadway cuts off the northern sidewalk from the church, and that gate is open during special events and only during special events, but there's no, or church events. There's no sidewalk adjacent to that driveway, it's just a driveline for vehicles. There was a request to add a pedestrian sidewalk there. Our position is that there's no pedestrian activity that needs a sidewalk in that location, they're afforded the use of the pedestrian bridge, or they can park on-site if they have limited mobility and need to access the church directly. So, it was just a comment during the Planning Commission.
So, the pedestrian capability on the northern sidewalk will be maintained, a pedestrian can walk the entire span?
They can go east to west, but they can't get onto campus.
Yeah.
Before you leave that point, would you put that drawing back up that shows that?
And what's the resistance to allowing them to get onto campus at that location?
The conditions of the conditional use hearing.
And that's what we determined at the conditional use hearing?
Yeah, and I'd have to pull up the exact language, but there was a requirement to fence the north side to encourage the use of the pedestrian bridge and discourage use of pedestrian traffic using an at-grade crossing at 30, short-cutting the bridge and being able to get to campus from the surface level.
Okay. So, can I ask John supplements? So, if a person is on the north side of Lancaster, a pedestrian, I'll let you get the sheet, and they want to go to the south side, they walk towards the chapel, towards the church, and then they make a U-turn and get on the ramp?
If they're on the north sidewalk?
Yes.
And they want to get to the south sidewalk?
Yes.
There's a crosswalk at the new Church Walk driveway with the light. There's a crosswalk on the street between the north sidewalk and the south sidewalk, but you can't come from the south side of 30, if you're on the south side of 30 and on ground, and you go to the north side, you're on the sidewalk, but you can't get onto campus. You can go east or west, all the way down to Campus Corner or east to Eithon, but you can't come onto campus.
At Campus Corner, isn't there a walk?
Yes.
That'll still be there?
Yes.
Well, you continually refer to this driveway, it's church, what is that? That's not, that's on the south side, right?
No, there's a north side.
It's for the funerals.
It's where the, there's a yellow gate there and some bollards.
If you had a wedding.
So, that will run parallel, or that does run parallel to the future bridge?
Right now, yes. Right now, yeah. It's right there, it runs right, you know where the walkway is?
Yeah.
And there's a driveway.
Okay.
For cars, for funerals and weddings and...
Yeah. If we could go to the screen instead of the table, we have a better picture.
Oh, good.
So, this location is the pedestrian bridge, and currently, there's the small staircase going up to Church Walk, and then just to the east of it, there's two small stone walls, and then right at 30, there's a yellow gate that's closed except for church events, for funerals and weddings, which is open for vehicles to be able to come in and out, but just on those limited uses.
So, this isolated pedestrian will not be able to get, the one that's on the north side, there's going to be a gate there that's locked except when there's church services?
But he can go to Eithon Avenue.
Church events. He has to go all the way east or all the way west?
Where's he coming from? Because the bridge is there for the use.
Yeah, if he's on the south side, he uses, they use the bridge. If they're walking from the east, they come onto campus at Eithon, and they walk through campus. If they're walking from the west, they can come up at the sidewalk on Church Walk.
Have we determined?
If they're trapped in the middle, they're going to have to cross to the south side, they're going to have to cross that grade to the south side and go up and over. The trade-off, which is okay to me, is that somebody who's trapped in, not trapped, somebody who's on the north side and wants to go internal to campus is going to have to cross over and go up and across, and your design obviously considers that to be a better scenario than somebody on the south side at grade, crossing at grade, and then, so to me, that's the trade-off that I see in your, inherent in your design, which is appropriate to me, I don't see, I don't have an issue with it, the inconvenience to that person on the north side is offset by the forcing that person on the south side to follow the procedure that you want.
Right. And we believe those people on the north side is severely limited, if nonexistent, for somebody that would be on that north side trying to get onto campus.
Did we resolve, the big issue that Don had, Commissioner Curley had, was the set the bus stop was near Church Walk, and therefore pedestrians would be getting off the bus and then being forced to cross the street, go up the steps, cross the bridge. The solution that I see here is to move that bus stop. That's no longer a terminus. If there's no access to the campus at that location, why stop the bus there?
The difficulty with moving that bus stop is you also have to take into account the people that take the bus, stop at Church Walk, and walk to the Northtown High Speedline Station, which would be why, an argument to keep the bus stop at that location.
But they can just cross the street and get on the bridge?
Right.
Or they can cross the street.
Or if the gate is open, they could just walk up the driveway. It's a question of, cut down a bunch of trees to build dedicated walkway for one person a year, or however many people that ends up being.
No, we don't want a walkway. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, so, just in general then, I think we need to see a more comprehensive list of the waivers, we need to get the staff opinion on them, and I mean, I'm not really in a position to give you an opinion on many of these because we haven't discussed them and I haven't seen the staff input. I can give you my input on the radius, I believe that the design that you presented makes sense, this is for the intersection at Lancaster. And did the Planning Commission give an opinion on that?
They deferred to PennDOT.
No, the Planning Commission said they wanted the radius at 35 feet.
Yeah, they recommended.
They recommended it, understanding that PennDOT has the final say in it, but they did recommend 35 feet.
And does PennDOT have an opinion? Has PennDOT rendered an opinion on this yet? I'll let Frank answer that.
An opinion on the radius?
Yes, whether it should be 17 feet or 35, 25 feet or 35 feet.
They have not. The majority of Tuesday night was really focused on the right turn lane issue, and I should also mention that the Planning Commission, the presentation that you just saw, a version of that was actually shown Tuesday night and was not shown to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's recommendation Monday night was to not increase the radius, as Nick said, but...
I think what I need from...
Was to increase the radius.
What I, Don, to your point, what I need from staff on this is the pros and cons of that radius, because I assume that we have a standard in our code at 35 feet, and there must be some advantage to that, and I just don't know what that advantage is. It's somewhat obvious, but I don't want to, I would rather staff give us the explanation of why 35 feet is desirable versus 17 versus 25.
Alex, can you give us that now? I mean, that's a good question. What does PennDOT get at, what, out of a 35-foot radius compared to a 25-foot?
Well, and I mean, Amy can speak to it a little bit too if she wants, but generally, the larger the roadway, the bigger the radius is requested because of the higher volumes of traffic and the heavier possibility of larger trucks, et cetera, making those turns onto major roadways. A local street sees less traffic, it's mostly pedestrian cars versus an artiro roadway that has higher volumes of traffic. What Frank's presentation and what we were trying to do was balance improving the mobility of that corner, improving the speed at which cars can make that right turn so they don't have to slow down considerably, hold up traffic behind them while they make what is a greater-than-90-degree turn onto that intersection. But at the cost of that increased radius comes the increased pedestrian travel time. So, in this situation, you have to, you have to weigh the pros and cons of each of those scenarios, whereas you want to make sure that passenger cars, for people that live south, can make a proper right turn, that Villanova's delivery vehicles can accurately make that right turn movement without impacting any cars that are stopped at the stoplight to go northbound on Eithon, while also providing a reasonable pedestrian crossing time at that intersection. Why we're requesting the waiver is we believe that the 25-foot radius we're proposing is that reasonable balance. We've provided turning templates to Amy for the vehicle that provides food service to Villanova that will service the storm, they can safely make that right turn, not impacting any cars stopped on Eithon Avenue to deliver their vehicles, or to deliver to the retail centers and to the housing in general, while also maintaining what that goal of that 64-foot crosswalk. And like Frank said, it takes a situation today with a 50-foot cartway, which is very narrow roadways, lanes, and a 17-foot radius at that intersection, the 25 is still a 50% increase, and in that outer lane, you get, you go from a 10-foot lane to a 12-foot lane, which we believe all those put together improves the current situation, but also maintains the efficiency of that intersection so that you don't steal pedestrian, or give pedestrian time that you're stealing from cars and hurting the level of surface in that intersection.
Yeah, Alex, so we can, real quickly, then, the waivers being requested are the radius waiver that we talked about, the 25 feet to 22 feet. The driveway width, and Don, I understand what you're saying, but the staff is telling us that we probably should ask for a waiver on that, even though there is some ambiguity in the code, so that's why we're asking for the waiver on the driveway width. And likewise, the nonconformities, they're suggesting that we ask for a waiver, the nonconformities on West Lancaster Avenue, and is there anything beside those three, Alex, that you can think off the top of your head?
No, there was the 25-foot radius, which is the one listed, and then the two interpretation issues that Roger noted that you just went through.
And the right-hand turn lane.
That's not a comment in the letter, it was a waiver request for the 25 versus 35. So, that's the one we're requesting.
So, Don, the three waivers are the two existing parking lots that aren't going to change, they're nonconforming, and leaving them the way they are, to take the radius from 17 to 25, not down to 35, and the...
And then, keeping a 20, a consistent 22-foot through the rear of the property.
And I agree with all those. So, what do you need on those, Don?
I guess I do, I would like some opinion from staff on it, you know, on the impact that they would have. They all seemed reasonable when they were presented.
So, they're requesting three waivers, and Roger, you're going to give us your opinions on this.
We will give that. If we had to give a decision tonight, I'd recommend all three to get denied, so, but we will take the time and review them. At that point, we will come back with an answer.
Yeah. Well, I agree that all three should be granted, so...
Oh, that's fine. Because I would just look at if the Planning Commission comes back and the Planning Commission asks for things, in my opinion would be, there's give and take. If someone asks for something and the Planning Commission comes back and says, "We'd like these," it should be a balance of those, instead of, "Well, I take everything and we give nothing."
Bob, did the Planning Commission say they want, didn't want...
There were some items that the Planning Commission had asked for, and I think those would be things we'd want to listen to, is to hear what the Planning Commission says. That's just my opinion, so...
So, we're going to have, we're going to have those waivers in writing for the preliminary approval, and we'll have staff opine on why they're needed.
But it's a little problematic that I'm trying to get to a solution, and already, Bob, what you're telling me is you're already going to recommend against it.
Don, also, Don, I'm trying to say...
Please allow me to finish, okay? So, this is an honest attempt to get to the solution, I don't want, I don't want the opinion to already be that the waiver should be denied and then have staff assemble that. I want, I want staff to tell me the pluses and the minuses, the benefits and the problems associated with that, and then we'll make the decision.
Don, all I was trying to say is if you wanted a snap decision right now, I'd recommend them to deny, because again, they're going to have to look, they're going to have to look at all this. Well, if you want them to...
I don't want a staff, a snap decision now, what I want is a thoughtful analytical decision, so I can...
Absolutely, and that's what we will give.
And just so you know, the only waiver that Planning Commission recommended denial for was the radius, the 25-foot radius. They did not make a recommendation on the driveway width, we explained it to them as Alex stated, they didn't seem to have an objection with it, doesn't appear the staff has an objection with it.
So, they were silent, they didn't make an affirmative, they didn't...
Correct. So, how far back is the...
Opposed to the radius.
Right, they were opposed to the radius. How far back is the stop bar on northbound Eithon approaching Lancaster? I see the stop bar was pushed back to, the point of the radius, if you go to a shorter radius, you will have vehicle incursions into the opposing lane on Eithon, and so what they've done is they've pushed back the stop bar on the left lane... And so what they've done is they've pushed back the stop bar on the left lane. And the question is, how far is that? And how realistic is that? So that's what we have now?
Correct. And, and we should point out that we have not run turning templates to see if that northbound left. I think, just to summarize, I think what you're saying, Commissioner, is this location, what is that distance? And maybe while I'm talking, someone could scale that off for me. And how does it relate to what exists today? And is it realistic? So first I should point out that I, we did not design the existing condition. And I, I frankly do not know if a box truck that is turning right is going to go into that lane. I suspect it will. I think that northbound left turn stop bar needs to be set back considerably further than where it presently is. So I would caution the board to not consider a comparison between this and this because this level of mobility is greatly improved, cause this will allow box trucks to make that turn without encroaching into the northbound left turn lane because of the appropriate setback. Whereas I believe this will have some encroachment into that left turn lane. And we'll get the number now?
The, the double-headed arrow is about sixty feet setback.
And then the last question was, is it realistic? And I think what Commissioner Fisher means by that is, you know, will a motorist actually stop where the stop bar is indicated? Which every motorist is supposed to do, but sometimes the tendency is to stop where you see an adjacent motorist next to you. If that's further up, some people may creep up. There's ways to, to fight that. There's ways you could put up additional supplemental signs and placards that say, you know, stop here. You can make the stop bar wider than the standard. And I think over time motorists will realize after a truck or two comes around and people realize that there's a stop bar for a reason, there will be greater compliance with it. So I think it's hard to assess what realistic really is, but you are supposed to place stop bars to reflect the heavy vehicle paths. And I'm not sure if the existing condition does that.
And if I can, I just want to clarify the planning commission also. I don't want to make any misstatements. Of the three waivers that we mentioned, the only one planning commission weighed in on was the radius one. The other recommendations they made had nothing to do with SALDO requirements. But they recommended that there be a sidewalk up that, that driveway that we're talking about. And they also recommended that Mr. Norsini go to Penn Dot and recommend the right turn lane. Alright, so again, they're not waiver requests. They're not requirements of the SALDO. They were just conditions, so to speak, that, that the planning commission was recommending to the, any approval.
I, are you finished, Don? Mr. Tweedy, can you go back to stormwater?
Sure.
Maybe put that color drawing back on the. Yeah. You said at the beginning that for purposes of discussion, you'll divide the three areas into drainage system that would go west along Lancaster, another that would go south along Eithen, and the last would go.
East along the railroad behind the.
You said east to the railroad and then you dropped it. Okay, so I'd like to find out what happens to the water that's going south along Eithen? Does it, is it retained first before it goes that way?
Yeah, we have our stormwater systems for the development itself. Then it goes down Eithen Avenue and cuts diagonally across South Campus through Villanova's drainage system. And there's a stormwater basin in the south, southeast corner of.
Right.
South Campus. And then it is, goes through a stormwater system again and then goes on from there.
Is there a retention up by, at the intersect, near the intersection of Eithen and Lancaster? Is there any collection there?
This is the high point of the watershed.
Coming down that way.
Okay.
This is basically the high point. So we have our systems in the rear of the site.
What is that system?
All the stuff we talked about, the cisterns from the rooftop, the rain gardens throughout the courtyard, and then three systems under the parking lot here. And then the garage has a system underneath the fire lane and the Performing Arts Center has a system underneath the courtyard.
Now, are they all holding only or are they holding an infiltration?
They're infiltration and holding and slow release.
Slow release. So what is, so to the extent there's anything released, then it's gonna come down. Is it going under the performing arts site?
Well, the performing arts site.
Or the gar, I'm sorry, the garage site down?
Well, everything drains into Eithen, into the storm drains in Eithen. And then the network in Eithen comes down under the bridge basically to the midpoint of the Aldwin Triangle. And then it turns and goes through South Campus.
And that's all piping underground?
Yeah, that's all piping. And then it goes into the basin that's at the rear of South Campus.
Okay, and there, again, is that infiltration and slow release?
I, I believe that's just detention and slow release without infiltration.
And then the railroad, you said it goes to the railroad. What did you mean by that?
Well, there's, there's a, a system under the existing softball, in the outfield of the softball field today. So it goes to that underground. And then as currently exist, there's a pipe where that water discharges along the railroad, comes through a pipe in the railroad, and then there's a stream that cuts south through the neighborhood. And then it flows.
There's no, there's no, I didn't hear, I didn't hear any retention or infiltration.
The system that's under the softball field. That's an infiltration and then detention and slow release system as well.
And that will also have new water coming from Route thirty, Penn Dot?
No, that takes the same amount of water that it takes today from the Pike parking lot. And then the concern that Commissioner Fisher raised during the Butler Annex was there's, from Barley Cone, or I think even slightly further east, from Eithen to east of Barley Cone, all of that Route thirty drainage comes to a low point in an existing Penn Dot pipe that cuts diagonally across this field and discharges into the railroad without any control. We've agreed, even though it's not our water, we'll pick it up and we'll improve it.
Would you be combining that with, would you be combining that with any of the water that is coming from the direction of the Performing Arts Center?
Well, the, the two systems, the, the existing softball field system and that system all go to the same point, but they're two independent systems.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to follow on that question, the, I believe it's a twelve inch pipe that goes under the field.
I believe it's eighteen.
At first I thought it was twenty-four inch, now I think it's twelve inch. But the point is, will that go into the store release system or is that going to be treated some other way? What is the remedy that you have in mind?
What we're proposing is similar to everything we're proposing in this northeast corner of the multipurpose field. What we're, what we've presented to Roger is an infiltration and then a detention and slow release system. So that's the, that's the current goal for that system.
And then the water that, to Commissioner Higgins' point, that, that basically flows into the South Campus housing area. That goes into a store release system. Where does that release to?
The stream starts right at the outlet of that and flows east. And then these two systems ultimately, coming south here and east here, they come together right before Clement Chrome Park and that's the stream that flows through Clement Chrome Park.
Yeah, we have, that, just, just to clarify, I mean, if I were to add up all this area, it seems like about fifty percent of this project is flowing into my neighborhood. Okay? Conestoga Village, Old Oaks. And I don't have a single resident in that neighborhood that can use their basements. Because the water table, if you put a hole in the concrete floor, the water will come up. And we love infiltration, but there's a, there's a, there's a bad side of infiltration, is that you're charging so much water into the ground that that water table rises and all the houses downhill from there are gonna feel this, no matter what we do. So I'm, you know, we can sit here and argue all day. We have, we have the law that only requires them to do so much, but, and I appreciate everything you're, you're recommending. This is a big improvement over what was there. But I can assure you that the residents a few years from now will be complaining. They'll come back to this board. I won't be sitting here, but they'll be complaining to this board about the flooding of their basements.
Do you want them not to do infiltration?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering.
And there's no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I don't know. I'm, I don't know what the best solution is.
So there's no, there's no, I mean, that, I don't think that statement has any, there's no engineer would say that the, that the marginal amount of infiltration that you're doing here is going to impact John's neighborhood, correct? That's, that's just too much of a stretch. I mean, I can't, I can't see that.
So there's aquifers in our neighborhood.
Yeah, but the water's coming in, it's sitting at the top of the, at, at the water table, that distance away. I, I just don't, I don't feel that that's an accurate statement from a scientific perspective.
I didn't say it was scientifically based on.
Very good, fair enough. And I'm not, I'm just, I don't think it's accurate. And if the alternative is to not infiltrate, then I'm not sure what we're asking them to do. I mean, generally, that's what we have used as the, the primary mechanism to control things is infiltration.
I, I don't have the answer, but I, I know that, you know, if you try to convey all the water away, you have issues downstream. If you, if you infiltrate, you help downstream, but you may, you know, you basically raise the groundwater table in the area. I'm just telling you, the neighbors on, on those streets, they, we all have wet basements. It's, it's, when it rains in my neighborhood, I can hear water running inside the walls of my basement. I can hear it running.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not in the system. You're uphill of this, John.
No, I'm not, Bill. Bill, that swell, the swell that this drains into is behind my house. And every summer that swell fills up and every summer there's mosquitoes in that swell, so.
So I'll say this, I don't think that you're being adversely impacted in any way by infiltration at this site.
May not be.
Yeah, and I don't think that there would be a strong scientific basis for that, for making that statement.
Where does that water come from?
Uh, it's coming from the groundwater table and, and from the, the, from the stream itself. So we, we know where it's coming from.
If all that was a bog, we wouldn't have the ground.
Another commissioner comment?
Yeah, can I get, can I get a clarification on the right-hand turn lane? So the right-hand turn lane was not recommended by the planning commission. It was originally by Gilmore Associates and that's no, no longer recommended?
Not recommend, it wasn't spoken about. They deferred to Penn Dot.
They, the planning commission and, where's Steve? I don't know if Steve's here. Are there, I think they asked Steve to go to Penn Dot and encourage the right-hand turn lane.
Correct. And actually, if I may, Mr. Chair, I have one question for Frank Tavani regarding that turn lane. So at the Friends to Preserve Radnor, Penn Dot, Villanova Resident Meeting, you had a model up that was showing at an event how the dedicated, dedicated right-hand turn lane worked in front of the Performing Arts Center. And, yep, and based on that model, it was working well. Now, you had a node placed at the entrance to what will be the garage, and I think you had a delay of a hundred and twenty seconds there. And Mr. Hanny had asked you to further increase that delay to see how that would affect traffic. The, the whole issue started, we had a previous conversation with Penn Dot. And although it is a, a benefit to have the, that had a dedicated right-hand turn lane at the Performing Arts Center, we still wanted to have some modeling, some assistance to determine whether the additional right-hand turn lane was needed, required or not. So at that point, Penn Dot had directed the applicant to do that modeling, which they did. And they displayed at the Friends to Preserve Radnor, Villanova Residence Meeting. So my big question to Mr. Tavani is, have you had a chance to adjust that delay at the node? And if so, what did it show at an event? And, and I think that's what's gonna be, what Penn Dot will be looking at, not speaking for Mr. Hanny. But I believe that's what they're gonna be looking at towards that right-hand turn lane.
I have not yet made any modifications to the sim traffic simulations. I, I think what Mr. Norsini just spelled out was, and please let me know if I'm not saying this correctly, is if there is potentially added delay, and what I'm pointing to right now is what we've been calling the PAC driveway. Originally, this driveway did not have its own dedicated right turn lane. But as a result of a meeting with Penn Dot and a request by the township and some investigations that the applicant performed, we determined that we can provide a right turn lane that has one hundred feet of full width and then a fifty-foot taper. Really can't get too much longer than that because then you start getting pretty close to Eithen Avenue. And I think the concern that Mr. Norsini has is, is that stacking combined with the length of the throat of the driveway itself, which is shown in this panel below, which is another two hundred and eighty-nine feet of stacking before you even get to the garage, is that adequate during special events? I think I heard him talk about simulating special events. What Penn Dot very clearly stated at a meeting where the applicant, the township, and of course Penn Dot were present is that it, it is not desirable to have any entering traffic for the garage do so via an eastbound right turn heading south onto Eithen and then turning left into the garage. A more efficient and elegant flow would be to continue through the intersection, use this right turn lane, enter the garage, which is now, now shown in this bottom panel. The credentialing process, whatever that may be, will occur in the garage. There could potentially be even greater added stacking within the garage itself, depending on where the credentialing point is. If it's right here, right at the very entrance to the garage, you have a hundred feet in the, in Lancaster and another two hundred and eighty-nine feet in one lane leading up to this point. If it's further in the garage, you might have another two, three hundred feet, depending on where that credentialing point is. And then the intent is if, if someone doesn't have proper credentials, they could either be discharged out this recirculation lane or out the main entrance to the, to the garage. And then police officers will direct them to turn right, avoiding the neighborhood, continue north along Eithen and either go to the next location such as the HSB, the SAC driveway, the law garage. It's all right turns, it flows very well. It does not affect the community. And we can certainly create additional added delay, this imaginary node in this garage to simulate if that queue will ever spill back or, which I think Mr. Norsini's point was, whether or not we need another right turn lane because we need this additional check valve to allow traffic to enter via that right turn lane and then go in the garage, which would be counter cyclical to the flow within the garage as currently depicted. So under no circumstance would I ever recommend during special events to have a right turn lane installed and used for entering traffic flow. I think Penn Dot made it abundantly clear that they would not substantiate that or, or want that either. They want traffic to come in the PAC driveway, enter the garage, and then we have the luxury of stacking them and credentializing them wherever we need to in the garage and send them back out.
Mr. Tavani, alls I was really asking was, did not at the meeting, Mr. Hanny, ask to increase the delay at that node to see what it has? Because my take from Penn Dot was, based on a, a previous conversation we had with them prior to that meeting and this meeting is, let's see what the modeling shows us. Perhaps that right-hand turn lane is not needed. And if that's it, Penn Dot will make that decision. Again, not speaking for Penn Dot. But I, I understand and I think everybody's fully aware of what you said. But my thought was, we're waiting to see that modeling with the, whatever additional time added to that node for them to make, get their final looksee based on your model with an event and instead of a hundred and twenty second delay, some other number. Because I think the question arose, how did you choose a hundred and twenty seconds for that credentialing? That really, alls I'm asking is, are, are you preparing that model?
It, it's honestly not my recollection that Tuesday night Fran requested making that note.
I did hear that.
Yeah, it was my recollection. That's, Steve's exactly accurate. So you're, so you're not, you're not gonna do it, or are you?
It's my statement.
I, I know, but you, you spoke before. So question, are you going to do that or not? Or have you not decided?
We'll do it.
So, just so you understand, the majority of this board has stated over and over again that we don't want a right-hand turn lane because it'll speed up traffic when you have, when you don't have a lot of traffic because it'll, it'll make that wider. And then it'll be, the pedestrian light will be a lot longer, right? And it will affect the traffic at that light.
But Bill, this is, this is at the parking garage, not at the light.
Oh, not at the light.
So I have a question. I, the only thing I didn't hear, I think this is a better, in my opinion, this is a better alternative to a right turn lane. If it were, if it works the way we hope it to work. The question I have is, is it two lanes in, the driveway to the garage?
Well, I, that's a good question. And one of the things I was attempting to illustrate is, one of the things that Mr. Hanny did say on Tuesday night was one option would be to have this entering throat be made into a one-way flow inbound during the arrival time of the event, which means that it wouldn't just be two hundred and eighty-nine feet, as shown in blue, it would be five hundred and seventy-eight feet. So the entering left turning traffic that's heading westbound on Route thirty could actually enter into what is the outbound lane. And the right turning traffic can enter into what is the inbound lane. So you would have even more stacking. And I think what this illustrates and what I was attempting to explain to the board is that there are a number of variables here that this sim traffic model isn't really going to replicate. If we're gonna have another three hundred and sixty second node, the, the variable really isn't how long the credentialing process is. It's where it takes place in the garage and the applicant has the ability to move that further in if it's determined that we need more stacking to avoid backing up on Route thirty. to avoid backing up on Route 30. Plus, we have the ability, as Mr. Hanny pointed out, of making both these lanes inbound, which would double that stacking and go from 290 to 580 feet. So I'll compose an email tomorrow with Mr. Hanny, find out exactly what he would like to see. In my opinion, what was discussed is something a little different than the context of what we just discussed earlier, but I'll make sure I know what it is.
And so, also from that discussion, this is a takeaway that I have now, tell me if it's accurate, that that scenario with the right-hand turn lane on the eastern side of the Performing Arts Center is likely to provide more stacking and less likely to back up into Route 30. Because if you had the right-hand turn lane on Eithon, you'd have to cut across traffic to get into the Performing Arts Center. And then you would have, so, I don't remember discussing the right-hand turn lane during conditional use on the eastern side, but looking at this, this makes me believe that we made the prudent decision during conditional use, because that scenario with the right-hand turn lane on the eastern side of the Performing Arts Center seems like it's considerably less likely to impact traffic on Route 30 than a turning lane on Eithon Avenue would.
But let me just say two things. We're going to have a block-the-box issue, although it's 500, if we do 600 feet, you know, 20 foot per vehicle, it's still only 34 cars, so, you know, it sounds phenomenal. But during an event, I just, I can show you picture after picture after picture during events, that the stacking is all the way down Lancaster Avenue to Spring Mill.
Aren't we going to have that if we have a right-hand?
No, I know that.
Anywhere, you're going to have that.
But I just want to emphasize that we're going to have a new problem that we never had before, and that is blocking the box. Because if you have cars stacked up all the way back across.
Meaning blocking Eithon.
Yeah, blocking the box. So now you're causing a complete block of Eithon during events, which doesn't really happen now. Right now, the police are controlling that intersection. We would have to have police control both intersections and all the other turn lanes prior. So I just, I know Villanova's going to deal with this, but we want to make sure that these turn lanes are long enough. 100 feet sounds long, but not when it's an event. And I'm not talking about the big events, I'm talking about the small events. The big events, Lancaster Avenue's shut down.
John, you have two other turning lanes before you get here.
Bill, the turning lanes, you know, if, the standards, I think there was one waiver on the turning lanes. The standards for turning lanes are based on volume, and if the volume warrants a long turning lane, but they can't do it, then what you end up getting is stacking into the through lane, so.
But John, if you're, if I'm coming up Lancaster Pike and it's completely jammed, I'm going to turn in the first right-hand turn and cut through the campus. When I get to the chapel, if it's completely backed up, I'm going to make that right-hand turn to go to the parking lot.
So I guess, since we're talking about this now, I just, two quick questions on the phasing of the project. We know that the garages will come after the, I don't, excuse me, I don't know the names of all the parking lots yet, but all the new surface parking that will be installed first, and then you'll be installing the garage at Pike Field. You'll be doing some other deck level work on other garages. But the point is, originally, you had talked about cars turning in at Church Walk and then stacking behind the dorms to get to the Pike Field parking lot. I assume that is off the table now, that's changed? So we originally talked about, instead of stacking vehicles on Lancaster Avenue, they turn in at Church Walk and then drive behind all the dorms, the new dorms, to get to the Pike Field lot.
That's still part of the event management plan, that's a relief valve, so you can have entries behind the PAC like we talked about in that eastern driveway, and then also bring other vehicles in here. Remember, this entrance and this entrance are level apart, so you can be feeding people behind the dorms and into this entrance with a straight movement, and then bringing other people in this way to load the garage from two points.
And the question I have, just pertaining to that during the phasing, is, will that egress, will that path be available during construction of the dorms? Because those dorms will be constructed after the garage, so will we have that driveway system in place and will be accessible for the vehicles?
Yeah, I'd have to review what the logistics of the construction.
We need to, we're talking about six months to a year, two years of construction. We cannot have all the vehicles on Lancaster trying to turn right into that parking garage and not have that second egress, that second pathway during construction.
Remember, too, that police will be controlling any special events as well. We're not, you know.
Ray just jumped out the window back there.
Have all these plans been called? Have all these been reviewed by the police, our staff traffic unit, all these have been gone through with our police department, our staff traffic?
No, I think that's, Bob, that needs to happen.
I mean, now, have they gone through with staff traffic, have been reviewed, and they're all on board?
No, I think, I think the special event planning still needs to be done.
No, not the special event, with this whole traffic coordination plan, have they all?
No, that needs to happen before final approval. We need to know exactly what the plans will be. I just raised a good, a good point. We are relying on this 22-foot-wide cartway to get to the garage and to stack about 300, 400 vehicles off the roadway, yet it may not be accessible for a year or two. So there's a disconnect between what we want to do, what the applicant wants to do, and what's going to happen, you know? So I just want to make sure that this plan is vetted out.
I think the modeling, once it's done, is really going to take care of the right-hand turn lane one way or the other. I have one more question for Mr. Tweedy, if you may indulge me. Mr. Tweedy, you showed two outfall points going into, we'll call the neighborhoods for stormwater. What will the net effect be compared to today versus when that project's done and all the stormwater management controls are in and the rain guards and so forth?
A net reduction in the peak rate of runoff and a net reduction in the volume of runoff.
Can you quantify that to some point?
Well, I mean, the 300-page stormwater report does that, but it's.
I'm looking for.
With, the Act 167 plan that Radnor requires, requires you to reduce from the 50-year storm to the 10-year storm, the five-year storm to the two-year storm, et cetera. It meets all those standards.
Okay, so from your professional standpoint.
It's like a 50% to 60% reduction, if I remember correctly.
Thank you. And that would be at both outfalls, roughly speaking?
It's a standard for every outfall, so all three.
But if you were to put that in terms of severity of storms, frequency of storms, to what?
Well, the one-and-a-half-inch storm event is a goal of, everyone talks about, we want to infiltrate the one-inch and one-and-a-half-inch. The reason that's standard is, is what you've been hearing lately is, it depends on where you live, but 85% to 90% to 95% of the rainfall you see is less than one inch, or less than one-and-a-half-inch. So that's why the new goal of stormwater management in the nation and regionally is, manage those small storms. Those small storms are 90% to 95% of the rainfall that everybody sees. So if you get rid of that water, you've done a tremendous job to stormwater. And to just highlight, since we came back to stormwater, about this infiltration issue, and we were speaking quickly with Maya, and she brought up a good point to highlight, the rain gardens in the cisterns use up volume by evaporation. The beauty of the cistern reuse that we're doing, that water's stored, goes to the cooling towers, and it evaporates. So that water's not being infiltrated. That water's volume that's being used, being piped up to a cooling tower, and it evaporates into the air. So there's different methods that we're using, all the volume control we talk about sitewide, that volume control isn't 100% infiltration-based. Some of it's evapotranspiration with the plants in the rain garden soaking up the water and evaporating up into the sky, and the cooling towers evaporating the water, and then there is still some.
The cooling towers only during the cooling season?
It actually runs in the winter as well.
So it's a heat pump, and it's, but it's not evaporating at that point, so we're taking heat out of the water, not putting it in. So we won't get benefit year-round from the cisterns.
But the net effect to our residents is a great reduction?
Yes.
In stormwater?
Your tone indicating you feel otherwise. Do you feel otherwise? Is that?
No, I'm actually, there's about six of us in the room that read Alex's reports and understand exactly what he's talking about. I think the applicant, one way or the other, needs to make the residents and everybody else know in everyday common terms what will happen with stormwater. Because when we met three years ago, this was, there was two huge issues, traffic and stormwater. So in what Villanova's done, I think they need to make it known how far they've gone, good or bad. I do think it's, I think they have done very well, and I do agree with him. I just wanted him to quantify in terms that non-engineers.
So you would agree with the assessment that, from a site perspective, at the discharge point, there's a significant reduction in both the volume and the peak rate?
That is correct.
When that gets downstreet and hits a confluence, that's a whole different argument, but for the water coming off the site at the outfall, there's a significant reduction in volume and peak flow.
Based on Mr. Tweedy's calculations, yes.
Any other commissioner comment? Any public comment?
I have several real quickly. I just want to mention that that corner that was discussed about where the water is all heading, that used to be a pond. I mean, my husband ice skated on it through the wintertime. There's water, tons of it, all around us, there are creeks, everything. So stormwater is a huge concern, and you really need to tell people what you're going to reduce and how the fact is that we are not going to end up with, instead of sewage, water in our basements, more water than we already have, because we live with that. That's number one. I was wondering if the Performing Arts Building also uses the same kind of rooftop stuff to evaporate water? Is that going to be done that way as well? That was one of my questions. Also, this has to do with handicapped access. You were talking about cutting off the road and the fact that buses come there, et cetera. Also, the parking lot for the church, it doesn't appear to me that there is access for a person in that front lot to get their wheelchairs, or if they are handicapped, to get up and over the bridge near Lancaster Avenue. It's way at the, do they have to go way back to PennDOT?
They have to park back there.
Or Pico?
They have to park back that way, yes.
Okay. Because, is there ramping or is it going to be a wheelchair lift?
It's ramping.
Okay. And does it comply with all the ADA requirements of one foot for every, one foot of height?
It has to, it has to.
Yeah, I mean, to highlight, like we said, if you're accessing the church and you have limited mobility, the current policy, and it will be preserved, is you can park on the north side of campus. So, but, to answer the specific question on the ramping, at the rear of the site, there is a code-compliant ADA ramp proposed to be constructed as part of this project to our side of the SEPTA station.
Will SEPTA make one on the other side as well for students?
I can't speak for SEPTA, but my understanding is they're reviewing that like they are for all their stations.
Okay, thank you, that was, thank you, appreciate that.
Mike, Mike, you want to be near the mic?
Oh, sorry. By the way, this, I'm Jane Gally, Barclayton Road. Oh, during constructions, I haven't heard any, and I read that giant stack of papers, will there be a washing station for the construction trucks so that, and where is the water going to go if there is going to be one? Because my husband's in construction, and he said, in a project such like this, you have to have a washing station for the construction trucks, and that water's got to go somewhere. And I want, and I don't think we really want mud all over Lancaster Avenue and all over Eithon, if they are, and where will it be located? Anybody?
Thank you.
To answer that specific question, this project is over an acre of land disturbance, so it's subject to erosion and sediment control review by the Conservation District and an MPDS permit from DEP, which includes the review of all concrete washout areas, truck wash stations, construction entrances for vehicles that address all those concerns. So we're required to go through that review process and pull the necessary permits to highlight all those items, and they're detailed on the erosion control plans in the packet.
But that was my question, where's the water going?
The township can, we can ask the applicant to go above and beyond the requirements that were just stated. So I understand the state has some purview on this, but we do as well. We normally require applicants to clean the streets on a regular basis and do certain things. So we definitely want to, I would like staff, Steve, if you could give us some recommendations for the preliminary approval, some conditions that would include, you know, street sweeping on a daily basis. I assume there's a large amount of excavation being planned for the parking garage, and also for all the stormwater facilities that are being planned. So there could be a very large volume of trucks taking dirt away, I don't know. And if that is the case, we definitely don't want this dirt storm in the 7th Ward.
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue. I'd like to know the length of this handicap ramp in order to get up to the bridge.
Yeah, it's, I believe, I'd have to scale exactly, but it's six or seven section. You're only allowed to go 30 feet at a time. You can't go any more than two-and-a-half feet vertically before you need a landing, and it's 30-foot sections, I believe there's six or seven of them.
I'm showing one, two, three, four, and then it turns five, six, seven, eight. Eight 30-foot sections.
Hi, Maya Van Ronsum, the Delaware Riverkeeper, speaking on behalf of the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. As you know, the Delaware Riverkeeper Network has had very significant concerns about the Villanova development proposal and the stormwater implications for the communities and for the streams that will receive that runoff. And we have had, so we have been focused on that, and we have worked very hard to involve the Department of Environmental Protection in these conversations and have done so successfully. And as a result, we have had multiple meetings that have involved both DEP, the township, Villanova University, Friends to Preserve Radnor, and myself, and other members of my staff at the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. And we have come to, I think, a very good place when it comes to addressing the stormwater issues associated with this development project. It is very clear to me from the proposal that is now on the table, that Villanova is not just meeting the minimum requirements at the state level and at the local level, but it is well exceeding them, and it is well exceeding them using best practices, using very compelling practices, innovative stormwater best management practices. And at the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, assuming this project goes forward the way it is being discussed by Villanova tonight, which I believe it will if it gets approval, I think that I, at the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, will be pointing to the Villanova University campus and project as a model to be followed by others. They are going to be reducing the volume of runoff, they're going to be reducing the peak rate of runoff, they are going to be improving the quality of the runoff, which is very important for downstream receiving streams, all of which are impaired at this point according to state review. I think the key here is going to be, as Steve Norsini has said, we have to make sure that the stormwater plans of Villanova are laid out in a clear, compelling, and enforceable way in conditions, and put forth for your approval and put in all the paperwork, and that we hold them to the letter of those conditions. But I want you to know that we have worked well and hard with Villanova and had a lot of really great conversations, contentious in the beginning, but I think we ended up in a very, very good place. I think they're pleased with it, and I'm certainly pleased with it. And I do hope that ultimately you do approve these stormwater strategies that they're proposing. Thank you.
Tony Bailey, Barclayton Road. It's been said that there will be parking on the north side where the monastery is, and I have, I have this legend, it's 25 parking spaces, and it says priority monastery parking available if necessary. So are you saying there's a guaranteed parking spaces, Mr. Tweedy, for the handicapped or people with mobility issues?
So Chris Kowalski from Villanova University. What, can you show me here what we're looking at? Could you point to it?
I'm just reading from the legend.
Okay, just for everybody's reference, what is this from?
Use the mic, please. Can you use the mic?
It's from your, you know, approved design.
Conditional use.
Yeah, yeah.
So what this shows is the current condition for church parking, which will also be the future condition for church parking. This is part of our conditional use submittal. It was entered as an exhibit during that time, and a few times subsequent to that, when Ms. Bailey brought it up as an issue. Currently, there is 41 spots listed in our visitor parking lot on the south side of Lancaster Avenue, which will remain the same. We have labeled on here, and I don't have the number on this page, how many spots are currently available around the church. So when you come in, this is Route 320 right here. So when you come in, this is Route 320 right here. This is Route 320 right here.
Wrong, wrong.
Oh, Ellison?
Keep pushing it. No, no, okay.
All right. Route 320 right here. And you come into campus right here at the Fedigan Gate, what we call the Fedigan Gate, the Spring Mill Gate. And there's church parking here in the Tolentine Lot. There's church parking on this drive. There's church parking around the side of Tolentine and by the Engineering Building in this lot on the hill and along this driveway. There are a few reserved spots for the monastery in this circle in front of the monastery and in this back row here. Those are reserved for the monastery but are available on a space available basis if needed. This number of parking spots will not change from what it is now. This whole system of parking will not change. People with mobility issues are free to park on campus in any of these spots and come in at the church. So the situation will stay the same as it is today.
So you're still saying that the 25 spots will be specifically for handicap?
No, the 25 spots. The 25 spots, as it says here, are priority for the monastery. So they're for the use of the monastery, but will be available if necessary for those with mobility issues. But there are others as marked on this.
Can you see my concern when we have in attendance 300, over 350 people coming at least to the 1030? And I, and I know for Easter mass, there was over 720. So my concern is, you know, being a parishioner, you would like everybody to be able to park and feel comfortable in finding a space. And just being there, I do see, you know, it's like people circling like sharks to get that space.
Sure.
And that's a concern.
I understand that it's your concern, but it's not shared by the parish. We have a letter as part of this packet from the parish priest indicating his satisfaction with the parking arrangement as well as the plans, the access, the pedestrian bridge. And so even on peak events, especially Easter, when there are no classes and the students are home, there's plenty of parking in the main parking lots and along campus, on campus. All of main campus is available for parking on those events. So there's more than enough parking for the church.
That's right. Now with, with the parking lot in its present existence.
You've got to talk to the mic. But the fact is, is that parishioners now walk from the parking lot to the church. They walk that long distance up those steps and now they're just going to walk on the ramp. They're going to park there.
Well, I'm talking about people with specific mobility issues.
Well, there's plenty of, there's plenty of parking point out for, you know, you can't park 700 parishioners or 300 parishioners don't all have specific mobility issues. But the ones that have specific mobility issues, there's plenty of space on campus to park. But you won't, but the other people have to be considerate and they have to use the ramp. They all can't park on campus.
I understand that. And with the land bridge, I know people can leave the surface parking lot and go to the ADA compliant ramp. You know, I'm wondering though, people who have to go upgrade, how hard of a task.
The handicap people, your parish should make sure the handicap people get to park on campus. And the people on handicap, use the bridge.
Well, I'm saying there's no guarantee. Thank you.
Why are you attacking somebody who's just bringing up a point?
I'm just saying that the parish has a responsibility to make sure that the handicap people have access to the church. That's all.
So I just have some other housekeeping questions. Looks like there was a letter from Villanova granting us an extension to April 30th. Is there another extension in place at this moment? So based on that, we still have a preliminary and a final approval. Well, this is caucus, but the point is.
The preliminary, yeah, you don't have a final approval. That, that April 30th date is just for preliminary plan approval.
Okay. So, and we're not going to get there or we are going to get there? I guess we could get there. But the question is, do we want, I think we should ask the applicant to extend that at least till, till May 11th in case we need the time. Otherwise, we're, you know, if we don't finish it by next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have two of these again next meeting. So timing is very bad. That would be very helpful.
So would, would the applicant be willing to grant an extension till May 11th?
No, I'm sorry, not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay. So we'll, we'll bring that up at the next meeting.
Just to be sure, Steve, we're going to get a, one of the conditions we talked about in addition to this is the, a plan for the cleaning of the streets as well as wheel scrubbers and truck wash. Want to have that included so we can review that for, for next, next time.
Okay. So I have a few conditions I'd like to ask the applicant to consider. The first is, as it was stated earlier tonight, I believe Christina Peroni had stated this. The entire project that has been put in front of us here, from the very beginning, from the onset, was pitched as a way to get students out of the neighborhoods. And then we all came to learn that that necessarily isn't going to happen. So we know that students that live further away are just going to backfill the students that live closer. And the students continue to have an effect on the quality, quality of life in the neighborhood. And to that end, I'm going to ask the applicant to consider a cap on enrollment for undergraduate students. They've promised us that there's no intention, no goal, no plan to increase enrollment yet. They're not, at this point, haven't offered to cap enrollment. I think we already have a lot of students in the township. And I think if we don't see some type of a cap or control on that, we're going to have some issues further along. So I'm asking the university to consider, for the preliminary approval at the next meeting, to come in prepared to discuss and to consider a cap on enrollment. And that doesn't have to be a fixed number. It could be a percentage increase, something. But give us some quantity, qualitative cap and quantitative cap. The other concern I have is with staging of the project. So we, I've uncovered one issue. We're relying on this back access to, to get to the garage and it appears that that may not be possible. What are we going to do about events during the construction phase? And what can, what conditions will you voluntarily enter into to control those events such that we don't have more additional, more issues with traffic during those events? If we're losing the entire south lot for parking and the access to the new Pike Field Lot is limited, what will you do to make sure during that construction phase that that doesn't affect traffic on Lancaster Avenue? I want to make another comment. There's been a lot of talk tonight, probably a good hour of tonight's meeting was all about that turn, that right turn. And the whole reason this is going on, this question keeps coming up, right turn, the radius of the turn, do we have a right turn lane? How are we getting the cars into the garage? The whole reason this question is still coming up is because Villanova didn't agree to do a second pedestrian bridge. Villanova promised 16 years ago to put a tunnel or bridge in. And then when the funding fell apart, they backed away from that promise. And instead, what we got was a dedicated four-way walk phase at Ithion Avenue. But we never got the second bridge. So what we're getting now is what we were promised 16 years ago. We're not getting something new. We're getting something that we were promised 16 years ago. All this talk about the turn lanes, all the traffic, all the pedestrian issues, that's all about not getting that second bridge. And we were, we were hoping to get that. Otherwise, I support the improvements that they're recommending. I'm, I'm happy about the stormwater management. It is an improvement on the stormwater because there is no stormwater management on Pike, Pike Field Lot and on, I'm sorry, on the main lot. So this is, certainly it's better. It's better because there's something new getting put, put in. So I appreciate it, but I just, I just, I really wished that we had the second bridge. I really wish we could have gotten the students off the pike and then we wouldn't have to worry about the turn lane. We could have a turn lane and it wouldn't affect the students walking across the street. I do have concerns about the, that rear, that rear entry through behind the dorms getting to the garage because there, those cars will have to cross Ithion Avenue to get into the garage. It's not clear to me how that's going to happen. So it sounds, everything seems better. It's, it's all better. But again, if we had the second bridge, a lot of these issues would have vaporized. That's my comment.
Any other commissioner?
Go ahead, go ahead. You've got something to say?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead.
I was going over the, it was turn lane, sorry. Jane Gally again. It had been stated that the, the one lane is 10 feet going left. The two through lanes are 11 feet and the turn lane was going to be 12 feet. And then there was something about it being 64 feet wide. Well, last time I added, it's 54 feet wide. So am I missing something? That's what I'd like, some clarification, please.
Yeah, there's.
Because 10 plus 11 plus 11 plus 12.
Plus one more.
There's two lanes, there's two lanes headed west and there, there are three lanes headed east. And the lanes will be 12 feet for the.
There's a turning lane.
The new turning, I'm sorry. The new through lane will be 12 feet on the far right headed eastbound. This, the middle, the, the second lane will be 11 foot and the turning, left turn lane on the north Ithion will be 10 feet. And then I assume the other turning, the other lanes on the other side of the street headed west will, will be 12 and 11.
Yes.
Oh, another 12 and 11?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just had this one more comment. As part of the conditional use, I had statements made. And I, I do have this statement from our pastor, Father Joe. And I respectfully disagree with Chris, Mr. Kowalski. This was spoken with the parish staff and council. The council has nine members. When I spoke to some of the council members, seven out of the nine had affiliations with Villanova University, either worked there, went to school there, or some, somebody in their family worked there. So, but none of the parishioners were actually called en masse for a meeting and told, unless they came here, they really didn't have an idea as to what was going to happen, what this plan was all about. Being one of the ushers at the 1030 mass, I see who comes and goes. I hear from especially my older parishioners, you know, with difficulty accessing, you know, getting to the church. A lot of them have made other arrangements now going down Lancaster Avenue East to what I call the chapel. So it's, it's not as cut and dry as people would like it to seem. Again, I do respectfully disagree with Mr. Kowalski in his assessment. You know, there's a lot of people that go to church there and do have difficulty finding spaces to park, especially people with mobility needs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
I think.
That concludes that, yes.
We're ready to move to the next one. That concludes the Villanova Caucus presentation. So we'll. You want to say something?
I think I have two quick things. Randy Maud, Alderman Lane. One is these aisles that we're talking about, whether they're 22 or 25, are they sing, one way or are they two-way? So that's one question I was unsure of. The second thing is that these, they're adding approximately 250 parking spots and we can argue about exact numbers on the west side. So a fair amount of stormwater is now going to go west. And I'm assuming all of these management practices are going to apply to those also. The buffering areas on the west area of the parking lot need to be considered carefully, if you will, as to what maximizes that buffer. To say that we can't plant under the SEPTA lines is a true statement. SEPTA won't let us plant there. But that buffering on the Villanova's side still needs to be, oh, use the word complete or reasonably thorough. The last question I think I have is if we have these right-hand turn lanes coming out of the new Performing Arts Center, out of the area of the west lot, and everybody's going to turn eastbound on the Lancaster, they're going to have to turn around to come west somewhere. And that's going to affect the community off to the east in your area. And I don't know how all of those people who are supposed to go, want to go east or want to go west, but are forced to turn east, where are they going to turn around? How is that going to be managed? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Let's move ahead now to 145 King of Pressure Road. I already introduced that an hour or so ago. But again, for the record, this is a redevelopment of a site. And the proposal is to construct offices, total square footage of 474,600 square feet. We're in a PLO zoning. This was considered by the Planning Commission on April the 6th and was approved with conditions or recommended for approval with conditions. The number of buildings proposed is three. There will be surface parking proposed and underground parking as well. And there are, I believe, 25 waivers requested under our subdivision and land development ordinance. So go ahead, please, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's George Kroszulik and I represent the applicant along, I am co-counsel with Nick Canelia. Just, you know, the project team, but I'm going to go ahead and talk about them real quick. Mike Devine is our, is here. He's our senior director of leasing and development for Biomed. Ross Cole, architect and planner from BAM Architecture Studio. Alex Tweedy is the civil engineer from Nave Newell. And John Witchner is now here, the traffic engineer from McMahon Associates. We, not, not ready yet.
Well, noticing that this was.
Okay, yeah, right.
There we go.
We listened to the comments that you have made, the planning commission has made, your professionals have made, and as a result, we've made some minor tweaks, minor edits to our plan. But the organization of the building groups on the site, the circulation, and the pedestrian main street all remain the same. With regard to the parking structure interpretation, importantly, your solicitor has determined that those edits have now resulted in a plan that's compliant with that section of the code. And we think now the plan we're about to show you with all those, with those various minor edits, which we'll explain, does in fact comply with the issues raised, again, by you, by the planning commission, by your professionals. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to tell you in detail about those minor edits. We're going to talk to you about the various transportation improvements. And we're going to quickly go through the review letter responses. So first up is Ross.
Thank you. Good evening. Ross Cole, BAM Architecture Studio. And what I'd like to briefly review with you tonight are an overview of the edits that were mentioned to you by George. You can see here on the screen that we have several things that we had done. There's a group of buildings that we removed from the process and that was part of the effort to reduce the square footage to something that was manageable. And what drove a lot of that was the issue of creating something that was, had traffic neutrality to it. We made numerous traffic improvements with John Witchner, we'll walk you through in just a few minutes. And as part of that process, we eliminated some allowable surface parking, a fair amount of it. We increased the landscaped area, which goes hand in hand with that. And in addition to that, we've added a trail, we've added trails to the site which connect with the trail network, which is part of the whole Greenways Trail Plan. And we've also added a sidewalk along King of Pressure Road. So this is the plan that you can see in front of you and on the, the large screens to the left and right. And so just walking through that, we had one group of buildings that was in this area right here, which we removed, and then adjusted the dimensions and the slight shape of the buildings a bit to be able to accommodate everything to get to the 475 and do that within what the zoning regulations allow. And as part of that process, this building here and this building over here were actually pulled slightly to the west to reflect some of the comments that were made by the building department officer in regard to fire protection. And that had to do with the accessibility of those buildings over here to this parking area where a fire truck might pull up in front of it. We, looking at the overall site, maintained the same entry and exit points, which you can see over here on the north and on the south. The circulation around the site remains the same, which is the vehicular circulation around the perimeter over here where you can see. And in addition to that, maintained the same locations for the entry and exit points for the subsurface parking, which you could see at these four locations over here. Most importantly, we. Most importantly, we maintained the idea of keeping this a pedestrian-friendly campus. You can see we still have the pedestrian main street, and we'll show you an updated view of that in just a minute. We've increased some of the green area. Obviously, that happens as we reduce the square footage slightly, so this area has gotten a little bit wider. This area has gotten a little bit wider. And we've also added this sidewalk that I mentioned a moment ago along King of Prussia Road. And then if I go to the next slide, you'll see that this is the trailways network that we have developed. We have added to that from what you had seen last time we were here, so there's additional pathways to it. And one of the things that we think is still a very valuable aspect to the site is we've got the bus stop that is down over here, which has the trails running past it. We've got the train line over here, which has the trails running past it from here down to the bus stop, as well as across the site itself, along the pedestrian main street that I mentioned, and then also connecting into the trailway that's part of the Greenways Plan. So, we've got several aspects that John will talk about in just a minute that we think tie in nicely into those aspects of it. Over here, you can see an updated rendering that reflects the walkways that we have through the site, some various features that we're proposing to be able to utilize, where people can use the campus to have a very strong pedestrian and very, what I would describe as collegiate feel to it, so that the exterior of the spaces are just as important as the interior of the spaces. It's one of the things that we think would make this campus extremely valuable to a Class A tenant. And even adding things like sculpture, which you can see here off in the distance in the background. So, with that, without taking up too much of your time, what I'd like to do is ask John Witchner to come up and talk to you a little bit about the traffic aspects of things and how we're achieving that traffic neutrality.
Good evening, John Witchner with McMahon Associates. You've seen this slide before. Based upon our traffic counts and our studies in the area, we're looking at approximately 75% of the traffic associated with this site heading back and forth to Route 30, eventually east and west on Route 30 and/or to the Blue Route. About 25% of the traffic will be heading to the north on King of Prussia Road. So, along King of Prussia Road, as we've been in front of you many times, we are proposing a four-lane cross-section of King of Prussia Road to comply with the requirements of the code. We are also proposing to signalize the intersection of King of Prussia Road and the southern driveway in this location, adding turn lanes out of the driveway under a signalized condition. And then likewise, on the northern side, we are also adding an additional turn lane on the driveway approach to make a separate right turn lane and a separate left turn lane. So, I'll get into the extensive list of traffic improvements that we are proposing under this plan, going through some of the high-level transportation benefits of this plan. This is a traffic-neutral plan as compared to the 2009 approved plan previous in the township. There is a significant list of transportation-related improvements within the public roadway network in addition to some of our access points. There will be significant reduction in travel times, specifically at the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road, that has always been kind of a pinch-point area. And again, it kind of corresponds with our anticipation, about 75% of our traffic heading toward that intersection out of our campus. So, we really wanted to focus some improvements at that intersection. There are proposed signals at and near the high school driveway at Raider Road and King of Prussia Road. That does improve the safety of vehicles entering and exiting that driveway, especially with the age of many of those drivers accessing Raider Road. And then as Ross had mentioned, there are some Greenways Trail Plan components that we will be completing as part of the plan. So, for different traffic improvements, some certainly are new to this plan. On southbound King of Prussia Road at Lancaster Avenue, we are proposing a southbound right turn lane from King of Prussia Road onto Lancaster Avenue. Again, that is one of the, a number of different improvements at that intersection. What that does is now it reduces a lot of the vehicle stacking and queuing on southbound, southbound King of Prussia Road at the intersection. It also allows us to kind of reallocate some green time to other approaches that need some additional capacity. Staying at that same intersection, as you come off 476 northbound, there's currently two left turn lanes, one through lane onto King of Prussia Road, and then a separate right turn lane onto eastbound Lancaster Avenue. Based upon some of the traffic counts that we've seen, both in today's conditions and future conditions, we felt as though we would get a little more capacity if we took the, that right turn lane and restripped it to a shared through right lane. What that does is it reduces a number of, a lot of the queuing in that right turn lane and also the through lane, because now we basically almost double the capacity of the through movements to continue north on King of Prussia Road. One of the things we've seen is that queuing was starting to back up to the main line of 476, and this allows us to reduce that queuing, so it doesn't back up on the main line. Again, I mentioned the traffic signal Raider Road for the high school. In addition, we are proposing a traffic adaptive signal system at nine different intersections, which I'll detail on an aerial here as well, mainly along the Lancaster Avenue corridor and then the King of Prussia Road corridor, which continues up King of Prussia Road toward Mattson Ford Road as well. This is the latest technology for traffic signals and to improve progression through the roadway network. As Ross also had mentioned, we are at, we have added the sidewalk on, along King of Prussia Road, along the site frontage. We've also added a sidewalk on the southern side of the SEPTA access driveway, getting from that bus stop that's there today. We're improving the bus stop and then being able to get those pedestrians up to the train station on the Biomed side. There's currently a sidewalk on the other side of that northern accessway, but this allows them to stay on the, I'll call it, the southern side of that driveway. And then a trail extension to Route 30 under the PennDOT underpass there. So, I mentioned the traffic adaptive signals. This is merely an aerial of the different locations for each of these, each of these signals. Along Lancaster Avenue to the east, the township currently has a grant application for, I believe it's for three signalized intersections east of, or start, I guess, starting at the northbound on ramps of 476 and then two more to the east. We are looking to add three more signals, three more adaptive signal equipment at three intersections to the west. King of Prussia Road, the southbound 476 off-ramp, and Radnor Chester Road all the way to the west. We're also then going to take that traffic adaptive equipment and carry it up King of Prussia Road to encompass the two new proposed signals along King of Prussia Road, the southern driveway and at Raider Road, and then tie into an existing signal system, starting at King of Prussia Road and Chat, Radnor Chester Road, and carrying that up four more intersections, King of Prussia Road and Mattson Ford Road, and then two more intersections on Mattson Ford Road. So, these are really, the Lancaster Avenue corridor and the King of Prussia Road corridor are really two good candidates for this type of, this type of equipment. PennDOT currently has over 150 signals in the southeast PA area under this latest technology. In fact, that number today is probably closer to 175 or 180 based upon conversations with PennDOT recently. As I mentioned, these two corridors, King of Prussia Road and Lancaster Avenue, are good candidates to improve that progression of flow along the roadway. What I guess we haven't been able to take credit for are the actual improvements to vehicle times or travel times along this roadway network. The post-implementation studies that we had received from PennDOT. PennDOT either commissioned or has collected six different studies where traffic adaptive signal equipment was implemented. In a post-implementation perspective, they've seen improved travel times between 38% and 62%. Our, it cannot be modeled in a pre-implementation standpoint, so that even kind of shows that our improvements are even above and beyond what we've shown in the traffic study and what township staff has reviewed. We had mentioned the, a traffic-neutral plan versus the 2009 approved plan. Based upon IT methodology that we are bound to use, based upon the proposed, the proposed concept of 475,000 square feet versus the 2009 plan of some office and some lab space. In addition, utilizing the 7% transit capture, which I'll always say I believe is modest, but we understand the township staff's position on capping that transit capture at this point at 7%. We are looking at an additional five trips during the morning peak hour and actually five less trips during the afternoon peak hour. So, if you remember, this is now a traffic-neutral plan, and in 2009, there were no, no roadway improvements associated with that plan. Here, with this plan in 2015, a traffic-neutral plan with a whole host of significant roadway improvements that will help not only the proposed campus, but also the general motor in public. So, and at a high level, these benefits show significant benefits at the critical intersection of Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road with improved travel times. The signal at Raider Road will certainly improve safety at that intersection. The two proposed signals along King of Prussia Road can act together. They can be coordinated together and synchronized to improve that flow of traffic along King of Prussia Road. And again, we're anticipating an improved system travel time of between 38% and 62% based upon what PennDOT has provided to us for this improvement. So, again, this is a traffic-neutral plan versus 2009. And here in 2015, we have a whole host of improvements included under this application. Significant reduction in travel times at the most critical intersection of Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road. The traffic signal at the high school will certainly improve access for entering and exiting vehicles for those students and other visitors. And although not associated with vehicular traffic, the pedestrian improvements that are being proposed really starting to take shape and trying to implement various segments of the Greenways Trail Plan and the master plan that we can now put onto our plan. I do want to turn it over to Alex that will be discussing some of the waivers and some of the review letters at that point.
Do you want to talk about the two right-of-way that we may not need?
Sure. At the Planning Commission meeting last Monday night, there was a discussion of right-of-way that is needed for two of the particular improvements which I had mentioned before. The first one is number one on this list, the southbound right turn lane on King of Prussia Road at Lancaster Avenue. That's really a second southbound right turn lane along the school district's property as you approach Route 30. We are still working with PennDOT's right-of-way records office and surveyors in our office and Nave Newell's office to understand some of the right-of-way impacts at that location. There may be a possibility we actually don't need right-of-way at that location. That could be scenario number one. Scenario number two is if we do need right-of-way, we will work to acquire that right-of-way. Scenario three is if that right-of-way is not, cannot be obtained based upon the best efforts of Biomed, we are looking at some other alternatives such as relocating the signal at the southern driveway to the northern driveway. And the reason why this, that improvement starts to change if we cannot get this right-of-way, the southbound right turn lane really improves queues on southbound King of Prussia Road because today, as I'm sure you're all aware, that stacking would actually back up in front of the southern driveway, thereby really starting to minimize the benefits of that signal at the southern driveway. If you move that driveway to the northern, if you move the signal to the northern driveway, that southern driveway can still operate well. The second right-of-way impact is number three on this list, a right turn lane from King of Prussia Road into the southern driveway. Right now, that is PennDOT fee simple land. Again, Biomed will be attempting to acquire that right-of-way. The right turn lane is, in that, at that particular location is, it's not necessary from a level of service standpoint, so it's not necessary from a code compliance standpoint. It's one of those improvements that are, lack of a better phrase, nice to have. And those are, that's one of the improvements that the township staff had asked us to explore. We are doing so. We are looking to coordinate with PennDOT on obtaining that right-of-way, and certainly Biomed will make those efforts to do so.
Have you spoken with Amy about those two issues? Can I say that?
I have spoken with Gilmore Associates on those two particular right-of-way impacts and our best efforts to acquire those, if right-of-way is necessary, acquiring those improvements. And certainly let Amy speak for herself, but I think that we have a good game plan and a good approach to trying to be proactive as we move into discussions with those two entities, both the school district and also PennDOT.
Thank you, John. Once again, Alex Tweedy with Nave Newell, the civil engineer for the project. Ross and John gave a good summary of the plan that's before you tonight. I just wanted to take a few moments. We've worked with staff through this process and have some last remaining review letters. Once again, the majority of the items are well-complished. We just have a couple items we wanted to highlight and run through and bring to your attention. Most specifically is there's five waivers that are being requested and noted, both in Gannett Fleming and Gilmore's letter. I'd like to run through those and clarify what we're requesting from this board. The first one relates to the traffic study, which Amy supports, is to permit the use of the ITE trip generation rates. There's a difference between the latest standards of ITE and a table that's in your code from, I believe, the 1970s. Amy and John worked together on that, and they're both comfortable using the most up-to-date data for this type of campus, so we're requesting that waiver. There's a waiver for the King of Prussia Road cartway in discussions with this board and with the Planning Commission. If you remember, we went back and forth. We originally were not seeking to install the sidewalk along King of Prussia Road because of some grading issues and some tree preservation issues we worked out with the shade tree commission. The compromise we reached with Steve and Amy was a waiver request for the cartway width on King of Prussia Road. The code require, recommends it 48 feet. We're proposing 44 feet, which is 11 foot, for 11-foot lanes instead of for 12-foot lanes. With that reduction in width, we're able to both preserve the trees, maintain the grading scheme that preserves those trees, and also give you the five-foot sidewalk along that roadway that this board wants and the trail, the Greenways map recommends. And we've spoken with both Steve and Amy, and they're both comfortable with that cross-section of the roadway. There's also a waiver for a permitted intersection, which is not at a 90-degree alignment. This is specific to this intersection at the SEPTA driveway. It's a unique intersection where the majority of the traffic's going through our site and there's limited turning movements towards the SEPTA driveway. Everyone's comfortable with the design, but just the way the code is written, it's not 90 degrees, so we are required to request a waiver in that location. There's a second minor waiver on some landscape island striping on the ramp into the subsurface parking. Roger had some concerns with drainage going down that ramp. The code requires it to be concrete-curbed, and he was concerned on the ramp into the subsurface parking that water could potentially trap below that, behind that concrete curb, and he preferred a, just a painted island instead of a concrete island, which we're requesting the waiver for as well. And the fifth waiver, which will sound familiar, is this issue we've had with interpretation of the code with Roger on the 22 versus 25-foot lane width for a drive aisle that doesn't have parking along it that's not an entry drive. Once again, we have two entry-drive portions into the site, which are both 36 feet wide, three lanes that John Witchner discussed, the two exit lanes and the inbound lane, all 12 feet wide, so we're 36 feet where the vehicles are entering and exiting the site. So, they are entry and exit drives that exceed 25 feet. But then once we get into the internal driveway circulation through those areas that don't have parking along them, once again, we're proposing to use 11-foot travel lane, similar to the travel lane width on King of Prussia Road. That's 22 feet, which we won't discuss again, but whether, if a waiver is required, we're requesting that waiver. Other items to note, the fire marshal did issue a memo, and Ross already touched on that, on, there were comments about the proximity of these buildings to this drive lane for the parking area. The fire marshal wanted us to pull these buildings forward to provide better access for emergency personnel, and we did so. So, we believe we've addressed his concern there. There was a question in Amy's letter about- There was a question in Amy's letter about different uses in the facility for medical office. And as John stated, with the adaptive traffic signals and the traffic improvement plans, any offset will be, any increase from traffic will be more than offset by those extra improvements proposed on this plan. Amy did have another comment in her letter about the potential for a sidewalk connection from the southern entrance of King of Prussia Road to our parking driveway. This is a large retaining wall, and there's, if you know this corner, there's a large slope, and this area sits high above there. We've discussed the elevation concerns and the retaining wall location with her, and she believes, as we presented it, that the sidewalk is not necessary or beneficial at this location. And then she also had a comment about truck-turning movement from the Septa access making a right turn on this inside corner. The property line for our property is the center line of that driveline, and Radnor Racket owns half this road, and we own half the road. So we are not actually able to improve this corner. We don't have ownership of that corner. So what we've worked out with Amy is we will agree to a restriction, a posted restriction that trucks cannot make a right turn at this location. And then, only other review letter comment, there's a conflict between Roger's letter related to parking lot landscaping. Roger notes that we do comply with that standard. I think we're to raise some questions as to whether or not we do. We believe the plan presented does comply with that standard as noted in Roger's letter. So we believe that that comment's already been addressed. Other than that, everything else is a well-comply, and we've worked through with staff on all the specifics, and that concludes all our discussion.
Commissioner, questions or comments?
Sure, I'll start us off. So as I read all these letters, Roger and Kevin, the staff believes that the plan is compliant with code, with zoning. Let's just start with zoning.
Yes.
And Roger, that's, from your perspective, it's compliant with zoning also?
I'll defer to the zoning officer on that.
And then, for SADO, there's five subdivisions, there's five waivers requested. They were presented as administrative, and it was indicated that you agreed with them. Is that accurate? Or that you at least don't, you don't oppose any of these? You either support or don't oppose them. Is that accurate?
I usually don't, in my, in my review letters, I don't say whether I support or oppose them. I just note what is requested and the section that needs a waiver.
So at least then, it was presented as, they were presented as administrative. Are they administrative then? So from our perspective, we have to determine whether these are legitimate and necessary for the project. They were presented as minor and administrative. Are they more, is there something more to it than that?
Not sure I fully understand your question about them being presented as administrative.
Well, for example, the first one, too, whether to use a particular trip generation rate. You know, I wouldn't know whether one is significant or not.
That would be in my purview. The SADO is based on 1973 calculations, and IT has been updated several times since then. So I would support that, or at least recommend that you support that waiver.
Okay.
As far as the 44-foot cartway width, I think the 11-foot travel lanes are adequate. The intersection in question is internal to the site, and there was some information that was provided on why they couldn't meet that section of the ordinance, which I'm not sure if you want them to get up and explain, but as it was explained to me, I would agree with supporting that.
I'd like to hear that.
Okay. And then you may also want to have the information regarding the next two then.
Regarding the what?
The next two section waivers that were requested.
Specific to, it's the, in Gannett Fleming's letter, the third waiver request that's noted on there, to request a permitted intersection which is not at a 90-degree alignment. The internal intersection, as Amy noted, is in this area. Currently today, the Septa driveway, you can drive straight back and park in this, there's some Septa parking back in the rear of this location. What a 90-degree alignment would look like, and if you know this driveway, it climbs up the hill to a high point and then starts to drop back down to the rear of the site. And we are lowering this portion of the property with grading to keep a lot of these buildings closer in elevation to each other to support that pedestrian Main Street feel and resolve some of the existing problems with the existing buildings on the campus. In order for the grading scheme of this property, we proposed a curved roadway which is slightly longer and does a little bit better to get better slopes into and out of the site. And the ability to bring this at a 90-degree angle kind of influences the ability to get those softer slopes coming down into the site, which the majority of the traffic into and out of this campus is going to be greater than the few cars turning towards the Septa driveway. So we wanted to optimize the slope of this roadway and coupled with the fact that this is Septa's current alignment, and we didn't want to modify Septa's driveway for a limited benefit of putting a slight curve on this road and coming to a 90-degree angle. The majority of the traffic is just continuing straight along this curve, and anybody that's accessing, accessing this point would have, you know, we created a little pull-off lane for that straight movement. They can stop. It's a three-way stop-controlled intersection, and if somebody needs to go to the Septa driveway, they can go straight. And we've worked through with Amy that we can, everyone, I believe, agrees that it's a, you know, a safe intersection design. It's just with the wording of the code, it requires the waiver.
Well, what about coming the other way? How is it safe making that?
Coming out?
Coming out. With Septa parking lot, traffic coming out right there.
There's a three-way stop, so if you're sitting here and this person stopped, you go first and the...
You've got to look over your shoulder more than 90 degrees.
No, you would look straight across. The stop part is here, so you'd look, the cars will be almost right next to each other.
It's got to be on your right, off of your right shoulder.
Well, you only see stopped vehicles. What about vehicles that exit, that missed a turn? I know this sounds, people will do it. They'll miss the turn, they'll end up in the Septa lot, they'll turn around and come back out. They can't get onto your property then.
Well, we do propose a sign here that says left lane, Septa parking, right lane, Biomed. You have to remember, this is a corporate campus. The people that use this lot are going to be employees of this site, and they're going to know where they're going to go.
Well, the visitors, though.
People using the Route 100.
Well, the Route 100 people do want to go to the Septa lot. But that's the basis of the sign here for an advance warning on the lane markings for that area.
So the, the only, so back to the visitors, will this site have tenants that will attract the public?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but...
Will this site have tenants that will have the public as clients? B to C?
Yeah, I mean, it's a corporate office campus, so visitors do come to meetings at corporate offices.
I guess I'll get more specific. Will there be doctors' offices at the site?
There aren't any tenants noted, but that is a permitted use in this district.
It could be, yeah, okay. I'm just emphasizing the point that visitors, well, if they, if they miss the turn, they will end up having to turn around and come back out.
Well, yeah, actually, they brought up a good point. There's an ability to turn right in here and then right here, so they'd have to miss two turns with two signs.
All right, I have several questions. I'm going to start with the right-of-way, the notion that it's not secured at this point. And what is, I mean, by the time you're in front of us for preliminary, you will not have that answer, right?
Well...
Which is like, oh, two weeks away.
We won't have the answer for the PennDOT right-of-way here, but as John noted, this is not a required improvement for level of service. It's, and then, by the time we're before you again, we're actually trying to get an additional copy. We do have copies of these right-of-way plans from the township. They're hard to read. I was here this morning trying to get those copies, and I should have them, cleaner copies before we meet again. And like John mentioned, we believe there is a possibility that right-of-way isn't required if we can confirm what we believe those plans show.
Well, I ask, I'm just trying to think through logistically how that would work approving a preliminary plan when it's sort of a crucial part of it. Would we put a condition that you would get that? And if you didn't, then it's really sort of changes the whole traffic pattern.
Well, I believe what John tried to explain and what we discussed with Amy is that right-turn lane, those two right-of-ways, well, we talked about the right-turn lane into the site. The second right-turn lane heading south is really only required for the signal to be located at the southern driveway to reduce the queues so that traffic doesn't back up through that signal and affect the efficiency of that signal. So if that right-of-way, John went through those three options. So the third option is, obviously, we might not need the right-of-way. If we need the right-of-way, we'll try and get it. But if we can't get it, the only thing that has to change is the driveway would go to the northern intersection instead of the southern intersection, but the site would generally function the same way, and the code compliance would still be the same.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I'm just, it seems to me it's sort of a major difference to move your main, your main entrance. Maybe it's not, but, so I just, I question how that's going to be worded and how we're going to avoid having to readdress the whole issue if you don't have the right-of-way, and whether we're even going to know. So then we're going to have to draft it for two different plans, really. So that's, I'm just bringing that up as a concern. The other two items that the, well, three items that the planning commission brought up, they were concerned about stormwater. Well, I think their concern was really more that they didn't have any information about the stormwater. And I, so we'll, and we haven't really heard much about it either. So we're going into preliminary in two weeks with just the condition that you're going to comply with code, I guess, but we don't have any, anything beyond that. Or am I missing something?
Well, it was presented that way, but I kind of disagree with that assertion. A stormwater report was submitted.
Okay.
Showed all the basin locations, all the routings, et cetera. We're still working through the infiltration testing, which relates to how fast those basins drain.
Right.
Which, in discussions with Roger, that's a final plan item, and will provide all those requirements. But everyone's stated that no stormwater has been presented, which is not, not true. There was a stormwater report submitted and basin designs provided on the plans, et cetera, there.
Okay, well, that's news.
Seeking one, one piece of additional information.
And then, their last logistic concern was about the underground garage and its compliance with code, which I'm assuming will be a condition that it will comply with code. Traffic. Now, they, they had sort of a vague direction to us about traffic. And some of my questions will go to some of their concerns. The adaptive system that you are proposing has a great network of nine signals, missing two, and the planning commission asked you about it. And I have to say, I didn't really get the answer. I didn't really understand the answer. So I'm going to ask it again, and I'm not really understanding why we wouldn't include those two. It's a loop. And they seemed pretty integral to making it all work.
Right now, there's two systems out there. One along Lancaster Avenue and then one along King of Prussia Road that we're adding to. The other two signals, I believe, that you're referencing on Radnor Chester Road, they are, they operate independently of those two systems. You know, one is, certainly is for the school, and it has some different peak hours than the rest of the intersections along the actual two systems. So it kind of has a different dynamic than the other nine intersections that we are proposing. Certainly, the equipment can be added at any, at any time, whether it's by achieving grants, or one of the things that I was speaking with township staff on is that with a number of the different PennDOT grants out there, they look for local matches to provide grants for transportation improvements. A lot of times, those local matches require 20% local money, 30% local money, up to 50% local money. I think this is an opportunity that we can say, we can leverage the nine intersections or 90% local money to apply for a grant for, for the last one or two intersections. But really, those other two signals are kind of, kind of outliers and not included in any part of systems along Lancaster Avenue or King of Prussia Road.
So are you saying they wouldn't have, including them in the adaptive system would not have a positive effect? Because they're not in the same system, and that doesn't make sense to me intuitively.
But the, the adaptive signals need to be part of, a part of a system. Those, those two intersections are currently, they're not part of a system, and the, especially at the school driveway, that it has different peak hours and different needs during different times of the day, say 2:15 or 2:30 in the afternoon, where we're not getting a benefit of progression by adding traffic adaptive equipment at that intersection. I, you know, I think that...
Could I, could I ask her a question another way?
Sure.
If, if you have this elaborate system for nine intersections and you're shooting for a 38% to 62% improvement in delay time, traffic that hits the stoplight or the signal at Raider Road and Radnor Chester Road and is stopped there, or hits the signal further south where the new shopping center is, they're going to be delayed, held up, and doesn't that throw off the entire functionality of the system for the other nine intersections?
Well, at Raider Road, that delay occurs during, during school peak hours, which certainly in the afternoon is different than the peak hour of the office complex. The other aspect here is that traffic associated with this particular campus isn't really hitting Radnor Chester Road in that segment of Radnor Chester Road. You know, we're trying to provide improvements at intersections that drivers from this campus will be experiencing, will be accessing and experiencing. We're seeing some traffic head up, up north along King of Prussia Road. We're certainly seeing some traffic heading down south toward Lancaster Avenue and then east and west along Lancaster Avenue. There's, there's not a high demand, really, if any, of traffic leaving our site, coming up King of Prussia Road, and then making a left on the Radnor Chester Road. I think all those vehicles would typically come down Radnor, I'm sorry, come down King of Prussia Road to Route 30, travel through that second southbound right-turn lane that we've just constructed, and continue westbound on Route 30.
Well, maybe not, though, if you have, if your main entrance becomes the northern entrance, and then it's a right-out. I just, I bring this up because it doesn't make sense to me. I understand your point about the high school light. You're right. It's, it's, the traffic is not going to conflict. But the other one is to another corporate center with, and that, those cars all stack up on Radnor Chester Road, and adding 600 more, some of them are going to be added into there. So it just seems nonsensical to me to not include at least that one. I understand your point about the getting grants and leveraging for grants. Fabulous. I'd rather get those grants further down Route 30 going west or going up King of Prussia and Matson Ford. Okay? Great, I'm all for it. But I don't want to waste those grant money on Radnor Chester when it should be part of this initial loop. So I'm not going to beat that to the ground. I just, that's a real concern to me, and I, it makes, it would make more sense to me to include at least the corporate center light. Okay, I'll move along. The, in Amy, Amy Kaminski's comments, I, can, can we get just a little more detail about the question that was asked about the medical office use and how that might affect the numbers? If that has been addressed? I couldn't tell from the letters if it has been addressed yet, or if that was just something that you had asked to be addressed.
I was asking for it to be addressed. I was looking for a discussion about it during one of, I believe it was a planning commission meeting, there was a discussion that one of the uses might be medical office, and that tends to be more intense than just general office.
Right.
So that's where the discussion... So that's where the discussion came in. I was interested in seeing, and I think it's important for you to see, what the potential impacts could be if medical office came into that area. And although it is by right, it's, it is something that needs to be considered.
Okay. And do we have that information for tonight? Anybody? No?
That was part of the will comply comments that Alex had committed to, that we will be complying with that and we'll take that as a condition of approval. We do, we do note that, as, as Alex had mentioned, the, the improvements from the traffic adaptive signal system of between 38 and 62% and all the other improvements do make up, if there was any additional traffic based upon a medical office building, those, those improvements in the traffic adaptive signal system that we can't actually model in our traffic impact study start to kind of make up the difference if there was some additional traffic from a medical office building. But again, that is a will comply comment that, that we'll be providing that information.
Okay. The parks and recreation fee. So I noticed that in the notes on the plan, the fee that you've submitted are for 168, which is the building footprint, 168,000, or maybe it was 148,000, I don't remember. The building footprint as opposed to the gross area of building area. I brought this up at our, when you were here last time. I pretty strongly disagree with that approach. I think that that park and recreation fee applies to building area and not the term of art, building area, that means footprint. I noticed that when the county planning commission examined this, they came to the same conclusion and they based that fee on surface, all the square footage. And I also noticed that in your first or prior submission, you also came to that same conclusion and your original submission was for the greater amount of square footage. Then there was some confusion and now it's down to just the building footprint square footage. So I want to just reiterate my strong opinion that that number should be the square footage.
And Elaine, the definition of building area is building footprint. So that's where those numbers come, came from, both in this application, I believe, on the prior application that we're calculating the recreational fee.
I understand that there is a term of art, building area, that I don't think is what is, was intended in this legislation and I don't think that's how we should and will apply it.
Well, I just have to respectfully disagree because the code speaks for itself and defines building areas, building footprint.
Well, I, I mean, when, in your first submission...
It doesn't matter what the intent of the ordinance is, that's what the ordinance states, so.
In your first submission, you interpreted it the way I interpret it.
I'm not, I don't know about that, but could have been. I don't know. Alex.
Yeah. We were incorrect on the, the first submission, but like Nick said, it doesn't change what the code says. We were asked to look at it again. It came up with Villanova Biomed. You know, we reviewed both plans and we revisited the definitions in the code and building area is defined as footprint. And that's the way that the code's written and that's the way the definitions are.
Well, if, I mean, okay, you can take that position, but I would suggest, and I will probably propose, that we put a condition on the plan saying that we'd like you to interpret it the way we interpret it. And that we would like to see the, the fee based on square footage regardless of how you interpret the, the legislation. Because that is how we meant it when we adopted it. This, we have not had commercial, you know, this is sort of a case of first impression to us because we haven't had this come up. It's come up several times since we adopted that in residential and it's not, it's not based on the footprint of the building in residential. So I think there's pretty strong evidence that that's not what we meant. Do I, does somebody from staff want to give me an opinion?
You've interpreted once with the Butler Villanova Building as the building area, not the footprint. There's no language in here, and, and this is a Sado provision, the park and rec fee provision. There's nothing in here that talks about footprint. The language in here says it's defined, building area would be defined as the area occupied by buildings to the extremities of all roof lines. Not all that clear whether that's footprint, doesn't say footprint. But on Butler, the question came up and it was the total building area, it wasn't the footprint.
So all the square footage that was being, right?
Yes. That's how that was calculated. So that's the one time, and we had the same discussion and that's the way it was interpreted. So I, I think between now and when this comes back for any kind of an approval, I tried to reach Mr. Canelia today to discuss this so we could come to some kind of a common definition because this is going to come up again.
Right.
With Villanova.
Mm-hmm.
Back, they're coming back. So, you know, there's a significant amount of money involved here between however you want to, however this gets interpreted. So I, we may disagree on this, but ultimately, the board's, you know, got to make that decision when it comes back in front of you.
Okay.
How to apply it.
Well, I guess that's what a caucus is for, so that you're forewarned about the position we're going to take. It's, the money difference was 100 and change and 400 and change, I think, about. Are we going to get another opinion from Delco Planning or no? Does anybody know the answer to that? Is it going to go back? No? No more?
Not for preliminary, but it'll be back there for final.
Okay. And then I had to, this last question is sort of a little question, but in some of the notes on, you know, trying to avoid traffic coming in and out, there was a suggestion of uses that would encourage tenants to stay on campus, promoting the site to eat there. And there was some language about having a cafeteria, which struck me as interesting. Is it, is a cafeteria allowed and is that something that your tenants would do?
I think cafeteria is allowed.
As like an ancillary?
That comment was raised by Ratu in their review letter, and Nick's looking up the code, but I believe there is some language for accessory cafeterias for, for the tenants of the campus.
For tenants? And is that something that's drawn into the plans or you don't have that detail?
I mean, the plan is proposed as a, like we said, we don't have a tenant yet, so, you know, those uses haven't been defined yet.
Do they have a cafeteria in there?
Yeah, it says accessory uses which may include a cafeteria or other service facility located within the building and operated for the exclusive use of the occupants of the building.
Okay.
As I recall, the reason for that idea expressed in the documents was to, and it might have been Mr. Gabriel's memory, to encourage people not to leave the campus during lunchtime to keep traffic from overburdening our roads.
All right. Well, those are all my comments, I, or my questions. I'm going to do my repetitive plea. You know, we're getting our draft ordinance for a mixed use at the end of this month, the 27th. So even though this is moving along and is going to take its own life, I again urge and employ you to participate in that and, and maybe you'll get a product you like just as much or more through that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah.
Are you guys, are you going or? No, you, go ahead.
All right. I just, the, this is a really small point, and I have a bigger, bigger point, but the fourth waiver cites Section 255, 29A6 and talks about something called gore painting versus concrete curb for parking. And as I, as understood the description, it's to preserve buffering and green area in the parking lot. But my problem was, when I looked at that citation, I couldn't find any discussion that's 255, 29A6. Is that the right place for that waiver?
Well, I believe the play, the code provision is there shall not be more than 10 parking spots in a road that's not interrupted by a concrete curb or landscape.
Yeah, that's it.
The portion that we're talking about is a concrete ramp for the underground, the subsurface parking. So there was concern when discussing that with staff, if it's a concrete curb and water's flowing down that ramp, they don't want water ponding in that location. So in lieu of the concrete curb, we're, we're just going to stripe that island.
Striping, it's gore painting is...
Yeah, gore painting is like when you're driving down the roadway and you have the, the 45-degree stripes that...
Okay.
So that you can't park somewhere or a lane's ending, that's gore markings.
And the only other thing is, in my view, what's something really big, and that is Mr. Witchner, your study talks about the traffic situation after this development, if it's approved and constructed, will be traffic neutral compared to the 2009, but nevertheless, we're looking at some very large numbers of automobile, vehicles. 666 during the morning, 610 in the evening. So you're really not telling us how much of an impact it is compared to what the world is like today. You're just saying it's better than what it was proposed for in '09. But the, I guess I want you to agree with me that if, if this is approved as you've presented it and constructed and operates, we're going to have a huge traffic problem over there.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I had a list of extensive traffic improvements to accommodate not just a traffic neutral plan, but the fact that a plan is generating traffic. Also, we, we are showing in our traffic study based upon our studies and the list of improvements that at the most critical intersection closest to our site, Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road, we are improving that intersection in a no-build versus build condition. So in 2017, and the site remains dormant, is one level. And, and as we add traffic and improvements, we, the, the level of service and the operation of that intersection will be improved with the list of improvements here.
Well, I'm, like Commissioner Schaefer, I'm looking forward to an alternative here that perhaps everybody can be happy with, that is something that won't give us all that motor vehicle traffic in the morning and evening.
I just have one or two items. Just things I'm going to ask the applicant to consider doing, it's voluntary. We talked about this being a TOD development originally and it really hasn't quite got there. So I'm going with transit-oriented development. So I'm going to ask that the applicant consider offering incentives to the tenants. These are financial incentives to use mass transit. So maybe come back to us with it, with some offer. It's not for me to say what you're willing to offer, but I think if you really want to drive this in TOD direction, you need to offer some type of financial incentives, whether that's through discounts in the lease rates for tenants that encourage mass transit or that you actually provide the mass transit offsets to help those tenants, employees use mass transit. So that's the first thing. Second thing, this, this structure will be the first multi-story parking garage underground that's part of a large structure in the township that I'm aware of. And as a consequence, A, our codespeople don't have experience necessarily in understanding that structure and what's required. Our fire departments have no training on fighting multi-story parking garages that are underground. They don't have the equipment necessary to do that type of firefighting. I would ask the applicant to come back to the preliminary hearing with some goal of offsetting the cost of that training and whatever apparatus is needed for the fire department, local fire departments to do that type of firefighting. I also ask that, that the applicant adhere to the NFPA guidance on underground parking structures. I'm not an expert in this area, I think staff has already looked at this, but the requirements are twofold. One is very high volumes of water, 1,000 gallons per minute is what's required. The other is ventilation systems. The one thing that kills firemen is the buildup of smoke in these structures. I have two sons, I'll just say it again, I have two sons in a fire department. One of them was in a basement fire last week. He could see three inches in front of him. He had to find his way to the basement and put the fire out. Okay? You don't want our firemen two stories below ground fighting a vehicle fire, considering that every vehicle is carrying 20 to 30 gallons of fuel, you don't want to have that situation. So you want to make sure that that system is designed, completely automated, will, will pretty much extinguish the fire. We don't have any of that in our specific code, but we do make reference to the IBC and NFPA. But I'll ask staff to make sure that we are addressing this fully. This is the first multi-story underground parking garage in the township. And they, you know, they, they carry risk and we're not used to that risk. We need to address it. As far as the traffic, I think, you know, I'm pleased that this plan is coming in at 475. This is a number that I had in mind earlier on, a year ago. It seemed like a compromise. I'm glad we're not up in the 800s, 900s. That was irrational. So I'm supportive of the plan. I think it's a good plan. I think it's going to increase traffic because there isn't much activity at that site right now. But the applicant has land rights and they have a right to build and they have a right to profit from their land and we can't get in the way of that. So we want to make sure that they're good neighbors and they're going to cooperate as best they can, but they have a right to do this. So I'm supportive of the plan. I just want to make sure that those, those concerns about the fire safety and the fire department's taken care of and the training and the apparatus is taken care of. I don't think it's a lot of cost, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed. That's it.
So, so just a question, John. How do you propose that they do that? You said you wanted a commitment for cash to, for training and for equipment?
I've, I've asked Bob to contact Radnor Fire Department and ask them what the cost of training and apparatus would be to equip them properly for this type of structure.
And you want a commitment of that before preliminary approval?
I would like that as part of a condition.
All right. My questions. First of all, you'd say that this is a parking neutral plan. However, today, there's about 400 and some odd thousand square feet and there's only about 800 surface, surface parking spots and now you're going to over 1,600 spots. How can that possibly be parking neutral or traffic neutral, doubling the parking?
So I, I agree, it's not a parking neutral plan, but it is a, a traffic neutral plan. You know, the dynamics of an office building are not similar to the dynamics of a lab building.
But it's an office building now.
Today, today, it's approximately half office and half lab space. And a, over the course of 24 hours, the typical office building generates about 20% of its entering traffic during the heaviest peak hour. So the, if, if you assume it to be a, a curve or if you plot the entering traffic over the course of 24 hours, that curve is, starts to flatten out, whereas it, the, for a lab space, you don't have the opportunity to do your lab activities remotely. You don't have the opportunity to do them at your kitchen table. You work in more of a team setting that you need to be at the office. And so, you know, from a metaphor perspective, you know, last Monday night, we were here on the evening of the NCAA tournament. There was five players and one coach or six players, six people on a team that all have to be there at the same time. If you have six people, six employees in an office building, they can come in at 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, 9:00 in the morning. They may have an off-site meeting, they may be working remotely that particular day. They may have an appointment at 10:00 where they go straight to the appointment. So those are some different dynamics of office versus lab. By 11:00 or 12:00, because this, the peak hour was spread out more so for an office building, you are going to need six parking spaces for those six different employees that came in, in a more staggered time period. And that's why we are seeing the, there's a couple of reasons why we're seeing the increased parking number. So that is one reason. The other reason is a marketability standpoint for what tenants feel as though they're going to want.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to follow. You would double the spaces and it would be traffic neutral, which is always the issue we've had as well, that the lab space is always less intensive as far as traffic and that's why the existing... that's why the existing building, the office and lab, was more desirable to an all-office building. Second question, the Board of Commissioners, I mean, sorry, the Board of Planning Commissioners had as a condition of approval, a condition that these right-of-ways be obtained, and if not, then they, it was their opinion, and I watched the movie, I watched the meeting, and it was an emphatic point, the right-of-ways must be obtained or the project's not approved. And John Bryce's partner, Peter, said, oh, the project, if they can't get the right-of-ways, the project's not approved, it's not the same project then. But today, we see, we hear about possibly, you're saying that you want to change that and ignore the Planning Commission's opinion.
Certainly, certainly not ignore their recommended condition that we discussed last Monday. My point was that there are options. And in fact, first and foremost, option number one is, we may not need right-of-way for one of these improvements. Option number two is, if we do need right-of-way, we are certainly going to be working toward acquiring that right-of-way. I personally can't agree to a condition on something that I personally don't have control over in terms of other properties.
I understand, but at the Planning Commission meeting, you said, no, don't worry about it. We will get those, if we don't, this approval can be reversed.
I don't think we said that.
I'm quite sure, George, that's exactly what was said. I watched, I watched the entire thing. Next issue.
Well, we don't agree to it, Mr. Booker. We can't agree to get something that we have no control over.
Well, that's fine, but you should have, you should have made that point, that point was not made to the Planning Commission. That's not what you said to the Planning Commission. Next issue.
I don't agree.
Reduction, you want a smaller cartway for the King of Prussia Road as well as the interior roads. That saves money by making a less wide road as you're proposing this waiver. Any sense of what that cost savings would be?
That certainly wasn't, that certainly wasn't the point of the reduced cartway widths. There's a balancing act between providing a sidewalk that the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners had previously, had requested, and then also complying with code, trying to comply with township staff. And at the end of the day, these narrower lanes act as a traffic calming measure that township staff had supported.
And they save money. There's less asphalt, there's less earthwork, there's less ancillary. So it does save money.
Actually, the original plan was 48 feet of asphalt. The new plan is 44 feet of asphalt and five feet of curb, or five feet of concrete sidewalk. So it's actually one extra foot of paving, and concrete's more expensive than asphalt typically, depending on prices. So it doesn't actually save.
The sidewalk was always going to be required because you didn't show it in your plan, doesn't mean it wouldn't have been required, it would have been. All right, next issue. There's no stormwater plan that's been provided that complies with our code. If you haven't completed the infiltration, you can't give us any comfort that the stormwater plan that you've outlined will be compliant with the requirements. So how can, how can you ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a preliminary plan that's incomplete with respect to stormwater?
We've presented a stormwater report like we talked about. Those infiltration testings, as we discussed during the Planning Commission, are final plan items, and a grading permit is required. We're not seeking a waiver from this board for anything related to stormwater, so we are required to comply with your stormwater code, and we will agree to do that.
That's fine. When you get that, when you can show us that it's compliant, then I think that'd be the appropriate time to bring the plan to us for approval. The next item is a legal issue, and back in January, it has to do with this underground parking. As John alludes to, we don't have anything like this, this multi-tiered underground parking structure. It's very, very unusual. It's, the place where I know of it is in my building downtown. So you have 50-foot buildings, but 50-foot-deep cellars for a skyscraper. But back in January, Solicitor Rice indicated that a landowner cannot utilize parking structure to do that, which cannot be achieved with a surface parking lot. To interpret this provision otherwise would permit a property owner to place virtually all required parking spaces in a restructure underground and increase building density. Although it would eliminate some asphalt, this asphalt would be replaced by larger buildings, more building density in those areas where surface parking was eliminated. The term allowable clearly refers to surface parking that a developer would be allowed/permitted to install. Very clear. So my view is that this is not zoning-compliant. Any response to that? You had, you wrote it right there, John, it's not compliant.
Did you read my next memo?
I did read where you changed, you changed your view for some reason. So what did we miss on, when you, in January, then?
Well, my problem with the plans as they sat then was they were increasing density, putting buildings, more buildings on the property by building a larger garage. If you look at the second submission, Commissioner Booker, and I think my memo was pretty clear, they demonstrated elimination of allowable surface parking. Your zoning ordinance does not have any standard in it, doesn't say you have to eliminate all. I think that is what the assumption was when the plans first came in, but it doesn't say that.
Well, but that's, you know, just a few weeks earlier, you thought it did, and I agree with your initial provision. Now, this provision came, we know where this came, in 1993, Radnor Corporate Center had been allowed to build a parking structure. The Board, the Commissioners at that time put in this provision to say, in order to build a parking structure, you have to remove the otherwise allowable parking. It was to enhance green space. I disagree that this is an accurate reading. I think, John, your initial reading was correct, and I think that because our developer is offering quite a few onsite and off-site improvements with this, that somehow that might have changed our thinking about how we interpret the provisions here. So again, I disagree with your second opinion on this. Basically, you said, well, because we don't specify that one or two parking spaces removed could allow all parking to be underground, your initial reasoning was much more sound. It can't mean that. It can't mean removing one or two or four parking spaces can allow all parking space to go underground. Further, there is almost no instance where a zoning ordinance isn't, couldn't be construed to be subject to some interpretation. If we follow this to its logical extension, then there wouldn't be in effect any zoning ordinance. It must always be interpreted in favor of the developer, and therefore, I think that's inconsistent and incorrect that we should read it the way your second memo came out to say. So disagree that, and I think that we should go back and revisit this, and I think we'll have some others to talk about as well. Medical office, is that a permitted use in this? I didn't think it was. PLO wasn't for medical office, as I recall, as it currently is written.
Office.
No, that's, medical is a different. So I would also say that. Now, why no Delco approval review for the preliminary? Why no Delco Planning Commission review? We've had them do a preliminary review on all other plans, why not in this case?
You're looking at me, I.
I'm looking at anybody, I'm not looking, I'm not looking at you specifically.
This plan would have been sent to the Delaware County Planning Commission. I mean, it would have been required to.
But we, Kevin had earlier said that it would not be.
John, why, so the prior plan was, but this version hasn't been sent?
I, that's up to the applicant to do that.
No, wait, no, I thought that's up to us to direct them to do that.
To correct my, or not to correct, but to clarify what I said earlier, is that this plan would not be going back to Delco until final. It has already been there as far as preliminary. I do not believe that there's any requirement. Correct my understanding is that.
So this version of the plan did, this exact plan that we're looking at tonight, this did go to Delco Planning?
No, I think you're saying the. Not the exact version, it was the, it was the version that was submitted.
533?
It was the version that was submitted originally, is what went, as per code.
So why are we not, I think I'm at a loss for words right now.
I think if you have.
Every plan that is submitted to the township is required to, A, go to the Radnor Township Planning Commission and the Delaware County Planning Commission. And somehow, we're in a caucus already without a preliminary, and we're going to have a preliminary at the next meeting? And yet it hasn't gone to the county?
I think what happens with this plan in particular, they took a building off, I believe, was the difference. So once the initial plan goes to Delaware County, I don't know what the county's policies are, Commissioner John, but comes back, it went to your Planning Commission, they made revisions. When there's revisions like that, typically, it doesn't go back to the county. In most cases, the counties don't want to see it again unless it's a substantial change to different use.
Well, in this case, we thought it was substantial enough change and a different use to go back to our Planning Commission, I think that certainly that logic would follow in this case.
Yeah, I think we have to be, so there's a reduction of density on the plan, there's a reduction from the original plan that was sent to Delco Planning to what we're looking at. But we have a process that we normally follow that is, I mean, is this a new plan submission or it isn't?
I don't, I don't believe it's a new plan.
It's not, so.
It's a revision.
Rich, I don't, I don't.
It is, it is a new plan. They've removed the building, they've changed.
Now, that's a change.
Well, that's a new plan. That's a new plan. One final thing, the adaptive traffic system, the traffic light system, you indicated in these slides that basically the light that's going in right now at Raider Road and also the one at the entrance to the Radnor Financial Corporate Center, that they don't need to be part of the adaptive system, but you would admit that it wouldn't hurt for them to be part of the traffic system and incorporate it into that system, and that it may well be beneficial, wouldn't it? There's a possibility it would be beneficial, correct?
I think my response was that we want to impact and improve intersections that we feel as though we are impacting with our related traffic. We felt as though these two intersections along Radnor Chester Road were not significantly impacted by our traffic, and that's why we did not include them in the list of nine intersections.
Agreed, I heard. And I would also say that the ones that are down by Radnor Corporate Center as well, down Matson Ford Road, probably aren't your traffic as much. But we do have some traffic coming through, 25% of the traffic going that direction. Certainly, my constituents, my neighborhood is coming through there. There will be now 11 new lights in that very tight area, and my question is, would it possibly be beneficial? And certainly, it wouldn't hurt to have those lights be part of that overall system, correct?
I haven't analyzed those intersections as part of the system. They're not part of the system, the reason why we're doing the one, King of Prussia Road, or because they are part of the system. You don't get the benefit of a standalone traffic-adaptive signal outside of a system, in my opinion.
Right. So we have two lights on Radnor Chester Road where people could back up, where there could be traffic. It would be better, and it certainly wouldn't hurt, it would be better arguably to connect them and to have them be part of the system, correct?
Better for, better for this site?
Better for all, all the traffic, all the traffic in the area.
In all of Radnor?
No, in that area right there.
I think we answered your question.
I don't think you answered the question, so that's fine, you can.
Public comment?
Well, he's coming up. I just want to say I was remiss in not acknowledging the sidewalk addition. Thank you for doing that. That's something that we were strong about in the last meeting, and I was very happy to see it added to the plan.
Hello, Matt Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue, former member of the Planning Commission and a close follower of this application from 2009. When I recuse myself, because at the time, I did have a conflict with the applicant, but they were granted relief of the 475,000 square feet of lab and office. That was the right decision by the township then, and it should be continued under the PLO today. This board has absolutely provided nothing but confusion to the applicant and to the residents. In 2013, a must was drafted by, I believe, the applicant and the Director of Community Development, which would have included 950,000 square feet of mixed use. That scale doesn't exist anywhere on the western suburb, let alone Radnor Township. We were driving to more density, it didn't make sense. The underground parking is just another example of a concept that doesn't make sense and doesn't fit our ordinance. We want two more traffic lights on King of Prussia Road, at Raider Road, and the south entrance, when the intersection of Route 30 and King of Prussia Road is already an F, failing intersection, with more development coming from Villanova. Density is driving this approval, and it always has. Not the solicitor, the traffic engineer, or the Director of Community Development, or most on this board has ever expressed a concern about the traffic that's about to come. I don't understand it. We don't want more traffic lights, and candidly, I'm not sure we need the applicant to provide, you know, calming measures or traffic mitigation plans. We just don't want the traffic. But, you know, why is everybody driving to more density when we already have a PLO that satisfies what the town fathers have always wanted, a green country? We don't want to be City Line Avenue, but you on this board are making it such. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, when somebody walks up to the lectern, one expects somebody to be potentially speaking. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be boring you, Commissioner Higgins. Something that was recently circulated touches on an issue that I've had with township solicitor for some time. Commissioner Booker talked about it about five minutes ago, and that is a rather dramatic reversal that the solicitor has with Section 28063(c)(5). Commissioner Booker made reference to positions held by the solicitor regarding that particular statute. Specifically, the solicitor, back on January 23, 2015, said the following about Section And you'll note, from what I'm reading, this is not biomed-specific, this is statute general. From John Rice's and his partner, Mr. Nelson's own fingers, typing this up. The language of Section 28063(c) states in part that a parking structure is permitted as an accessory use only when constructed as an accessory structure for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. Essentially, the ordinance states that if a proposed plan cannot meet the parking requirements by surface parking lots, a landowner cannot utilize a parking structure to do that which cannot be achieved with a surface parking lot. To interpret this provision otherwise would permit a property owner to. owner to place virtually all required parking spaces in a parking structure underground and increase building density." And then, 68 days later, on April 1, 2015, John Rice reverses course. Now, I believe Commissioner Booker attempted to query Mr. Rice as to what changed his mind. What I'm curious about is there some case law that Solicitor Rice looked at that occurred in the window between January 23, 2015, and April 1, 2015, that had him make such a dramatic change?
You're addressing the board?
Well, at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, you allowed Cheryl Tumola, who I believe is running for commissioner in your ward, as the endorsed Democratic politician, to ask a staff member direct questions. Will you extend that same courtesy to me?
No, you can ask us the questions.
I see. Well, I guess perhaps somebody else during board comment will query John Rice as to why he had that change. Now, hopefully, on April 6, 2015, Mr. Kaplan, who I see here tonight, authored a very detailed correspondence to this board pointing out John Rice's inconsistency. A bit of a confession. I usually believe that somebody is advocating in a position of strength if they are block quoting. It's a personal belief of mine. And in Mr. Kaplan's very clear letter, he does exactly that regarding John Rice's positions as to 28063(c). When one sees that type of an aggressive change, one should expect that there is a strong persuasive rationale that would cause an attorney, who claims on his firm's website, in his biography section, that he is an expert in zoning law, why he would have such an abrupt change regarding, again, a project-neutral zoning statute. From the section I just read to you a couple of minutes ago, he's not specifically talking about biomed. He's talking about 28063(c), specifically, 28063(c)(5). And as Mr. Kaplan points out in his letter, inexplicably, trust her, you don't have an issue with me reading from your letter verbatim, Mr. Rice has reversed his conclusion that the ordinance is clear and has now concluded that Section 28063(c)(5) of the ordinance is ambiguous and would support an interpretation that the proposed plan can use a parking structure to meet parking requirements even when the required number of parking spaces could not be placed on the surface. He concludes biomed's current plan, which eliminates 60 of the proposed surface parking spaces and places them in an underground parking structure containing 1,350 parking spaces, complies with Section 28063(c)(5). So, we've gone from John Rice on January 23, 2015, saying specifically, essentially, "The ordinance states that if a proposed plan cannot meet the parking requirements by surface parking lots, a landowner cannot utilize a parking structure to do that which cannot be achieved with a surface parking lot," to now, not only is that statute ambiguous, but it is so elastic that biomed's plan fits within that. The people of this township have the right to expect that when the solicitor authors a legal memorandum to you all, which is then available for public consumption, that that opinion in the memorandum is well researched, well thought out, and will be applied consistently. And should there be any deviation from that in less than a 90-day window, that there be a suitable, justifiable explanation. And certainly, Commissioner Booker, when Solicitor Rice responded to you, he didn't give you any reason why he has changed his interpretation of the definition of that statute. Simply stating that biomed has submitted a different plan in no way impacts what he specifically stated along with his partner back on January 23, 2015.
Thank you. We got your point. Thank you.
You may have gotten my point. So, I would just state, when we look at the performance of the solicitor, which, back in early January, you voted 7-0 to keep. And Commissioner Schaefer, you specifically stated how happy you were with John Rice's research-
This has nothing to do, this has nothing to do with this application, please, stay on topic. Stay on topic.
Please don't interject. Please don't interject.
No, your time is up. Please, please, your time is up.
Please stay on topic, please, your time is up.
Your time is up.
You're being inconsistent and you're tiring me out. Please, have the decency to ask Solicitor Rice why, again, in a subject-general zoning statute, he made such a dramatic change within a 68-day window. He owes you that explanation, because right now it looks transparently silly.
Thank you.
Transparently silly.
Thank you.
To have such a narrow window and no stated explanation. So, please, during board comment tonight, query him on that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yeah, you're not going to speak, okay.
I think Randy Maud Aldwin Lane-
Yes.
I have a relatively simple one, but it deals with this idea where your grading plans that they've presented somehow justify having a less-than-right angle turn from going from the northern parking lot onto the SEPTA lane. The assumption is that that SEPTA lane is used only for, to service that parking lot, which has maybe 30 spaces in it, and I'm guessing at the number. I can tell you that SEPTA lot is often full, and I can tell you that the Radnor Financial Center uses continuous sets of buses, two or three buses at a time, to ferry people from that SEPTA station on the Norristown High Speed Line to their corporate center and back in the, in the, at nighttime. So, by no means assume that that road that's, that goes to the SEPTA Center, or SEPTA parking lot, is used as a relatively minor road, which the applicant portrayed them as, leading to this idea of a three-way stop intersection, looking over your shoulder and trying to figure it out. If there's some way that the grading can be set up so that that is a perpendicular story, I would make that a suggestion to you as a way to look.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mark Kaplan, as you know, I represent Brandywine Realty Trust. I didn't expect to have my letter read in such a manner, but it is what it is, and I've said to you my position with regard to the below-grade, the below-grade garage. But what I want to emphasize from Brandywine's point of view is that we're very, very concerned, as you know, about the traffic. We believe that this plan utilizing this artifice of going underground is just to create more density. It's not the more density that we're concerned about, it's the more traffic that we're concerned about. You've heard me say it over and over again, so I don't have to belabor it. So, I don't think that this plan complies for all the reasons that were in my letter. There are two other things that have been said, and so I won't spend a lot of time. I do this all the time. The most important driving factor in any plan today is stormwater management and how you're going to comply with the infiltration requirements of this township, every other township, and DEP's requirements. It boggles my mind that there are no infiltration testing done. It only makes me suspect that there's something wrong, because to the extent that you can't infiltrate, you have to have more area devoted to stormwater management. So, I, I don't see how you approve this plan. Elaine, I think we agreed on something. I agree with you 100% that this plan should not be approved before you have stormwater management solved. The other thing is, and I've, again, spent a fair amount of time with below-grade, albeit not two-story or three-story down below, but until you start designing that garage with what's coming through from up top, you don't know how many spaces you have, and you don't know how you're going to make it, how you're going to make it safe. I, I have gone through this for Brandywine in Plymouth, and all of the issues get asked at preliminary approval. How the truck's getting through, how the fire getting through, well, how are you controlling the, the exhausts? Those are not building code issues. Those are land development issues. And I just, I don't see why this plan is ready yet. I think it's wrong from the, the density issue, but stormwater and the garage, this just, this plan's just not ready for primetime. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
That concludes Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Community development?
Nothing.
Finance and audit?
Nothing.
Library?
Yeah, there was a, the capital campaign for the library commenced last week with a new campaign called Be Part of the Story, and it's with, for raising funds for the library expansion project. They have a commitment right now from the township and from, with private donations totaling about 1.9 million, and they're looking to raise another 2 million more. So, that is a, an ongoing fundraising effort, and there will be another meeting this week of the library boards. I'll report back after that.
Parks Recreation, Bob, we have anything?
Just two events that are up and coming. The Wheels of Wayne is this Sunday, April 19th, from 1:00 to 4:00 on North Wayne Avenue. A lot of the businesses, food and the vehicles and entertainment are taking place, as well as the Arbor Day event on April 21st at 6:00 PM at the Friends of Radnor Trail Park.
Personnel Administration, John?
No report.
Public Health, do we have anything? Public Safety?
Nothing.
Old business. New business?
I just, there's one thing that was brought up tonight. Something about the, the code makes reference to the ITE rates. Let's see, John's, John Rice, tonight, there was a mention, there was a waiver request on the ITE rates that are in our zoning code, and I want to make sure that that's addressed. But, so they should be by reference only, and apparently they're quoted somewhere in the zoning code.
We're going to use the modern one.
Yeah, the idea, though, we never, we should never reference, we should never have the numbers in our code, only by reference.
They, they've been in there since 1973. It's a, it's a, and you're not the only municipality with that. Steve just sent me a notice, and he wanted me to look into that. And so, I'll be getting back to Steve on that. But, back in '73, ITE hadn't come out with their trip generation rate, so there was a report that came out, and all the information that was reported in your SALDO came from there. And since then, I think we're on the ninth edition right now. So, typically, what we do is we just call it Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report, most current, and that solves that problem.
Right, so by reverence.
Yep.
So, that'll, that'll be a code change in the SALDO?
You're spot on with that, yes.
Okay, so you guys will-
Coordinate.
Tell John what we need to do.
Well, the question is-
I know there's others.
Well, why is it, why is it coming up now? Why, is this the first developer to raise it, or is it, why not, why not keep it the way it is, or why is it now we want to, want to do it?
Because it's, the information that was gathered in 1973 was based on maybe 1,000 studies, and since then, there's 50,000 studies across the country that were provided.
Understood, but it's, it's been 40, 50 years.
Because maybe it wasn't brought up as something that needed to be resolved until it showed up as a SALDO request for a waiver from that, because we pointed it out to them.
It just seems unusual.
Honestly.
It seems unusual that no one else would raise that before now, before this particular developer.
Well, I think normally, when we're going through this, the traffic impact study, we sit down with PennDOT, and we set up a scoping meeting, and it's generally, generally, we follow the ITE methodology, so nobody ever considers questioning it. So, I think when they were coming through the process, they were trying to make sure that they crossed all their Ts and dotted all their Is, put it into the, you know, as a waiver is requested because of this, and I would support it because that information is out of date.
Well, but what did they do differently than other, so they didn't come to you and develop something?
Uh, yes.
Again, I think this is a-
Previous applicants that came in would talk to me, and we would say, and we would support you using the current numbers over that. So, perhaps it was my omission for not identifying that as something that required a waiver and something that I supported in the past. So, I will be cognizant of that moving forward.
Well, it hasn't been that many.
No, there hasn't.
No, and, okay, well, thank you for taking care of that.
Any other new business?
Yeah, I had one item. So, some neighbors in my neighborhood at the, near the intersection of Oakford and Arbordale have an interest in, have a concern about the stop sign there. It's a two-way stop. They asked for some interventions. There was some interface with staff traffic. Ultimately, staff traffic did not recommend converting it to a four-way stop. They looked at a variety of things. One of the, one of them was converting from a two-way to a four-way. The chief of police and Bob went out, they looked at it with the neighbor, some input from the neighbors and from myself, and as I understand it, there's going to be a recommendation from, from Bob and the chief essentially saying that, that all things considered, that intersection would be better served by a four-way stop relative to a two-way stop.
That's correct.
So, that'll happen sometime May arguably, or?
If you would like it at the next meeting for introduction, we will do that.
Okay, I would like it as soon as possible.
Son, I've, I've been noticing that for 20 years.
Okay.
You know, it's a-
All right, so, so that, that's a recommendation coming from Bob and staff at the convenience for them when they can get it to us. Thank you.
Any other new business? Public participation?
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Just because this wasn't stated at the start of the meeting, we see, obviously, that Commissioner Nagel is not here tonight. He was not at the March 23, 2015 meeting. Mr. Curley, I believe, you were the one who gave the explanation at the March 23, 2015 meeting that he was ill. Is there a stated rationale for Commissioner Nagel's absence tonight?
It's personal.
I wouldn't bring it up, had not specific explanations been given for-
Well, we're not giving any-
Would you please, let me finish my comment before you interject. There had been prior rationales provided publicly for commissioners not being present, such as illness. Commissioner Nagel has, I believe, since the start of the new year, been missing from three meetings. One meeting was when multiple members of the public came in to talk about his "somebody shoot you" outburst. That was the same meeting where this board voted unanimously in a resolution condemning his remarks, demanding that he apologize and refrain from such conduct in the future. He's not here for that meeting. March 23, and the reason given was that he was ill. Public reason, publicly stated reason, he was ill. March 23, 2015, John Nagel, not present at a meeting. You gave the explanation, Commissioner Curley. He was not here because he is ill. Tonight, there is reticence to state the specific reason that John Nagel is not here. Am I getting that correctly?
Can I, I don't remember what, what you just described. I don't remember it that way.
Trust me, it happened that way.
Very good, but let me tell you how I remember it happening. That I remember, what I heard was some concern as to why John was not here, and what I heard was, was that, there was, is, is there something wrong? Is this an accusation? Is this something inappropriate about John, John Nagel not being at the meeting? And what I recall I said was John had a good reason. I don't recall saying that he was ill or not ill. I just said he had a good reason. That's my recollection, because quite frankly, me stating that John is ill or not ill, I don't see that as my, my business. I will say that before that last meeting, I spoke with John, and he told me why he wasn't going to be there, and it's, it was a valid reason to me as to why he wasn't there.
All three meetings, John Nagel has called me and explained to me why he wasn't going to be here, and I accepted that explanation.
All three meetings? This is the third meeting?
And this isn't, for me, this isn't a change. I don't recall.
Let me be quite clear. I just want to be clear with my point. I'm not standing up here demanding that somebody on this board give me an explanation as to why John Nagel is not present. I'm pointing out that there is precedent in terms of giving the explanation why he's not here.
Right.
To the extent this board is not going to continue with that precedent, I think that's important for the public to know. But I am in no position to ask what John Nagel may have told you privately, other than he is not here.
Very good. I don't, it sounds to me like what you're saying is that I established that precedent.
I'm sorry, I'm just hearing in my ear somebody saying wasting our time over on the right over there.
Please allow me to finish.
Okay, I just, I just want to point that out, that I heard that from the right over there, which would be in the direction of.
So, so what I'm hearing you tell me is that I established that precedent. I don't remember that I did.
I didn't state that you established any such precedent.
You did. You did say that he was sick.
And you did not establish that precedent. You did not establish that precedent.
You said it, and I accepted it, but you did say, he's not here, he has a valid reason, he's sick, is what you said.
And just to be.
Well, I shouldn't have said that he was sick.
I'm not here debating with you as to whether or not you should have said it or not, Commissioner Curley, and let me be clear. You didn't establish the precedent. The first meeting that John Nagel was missing from was the meeting that preceded the March 23, 2015 meeting.
Yeah.
And that's when people were in here asking, talking about his "somebody shoot you" remark. He wasn't here, and there was a position given as to why he wasn't here. But now, if that's no longer going to be this board's precedent, that's all I wanted to know.
Yes, that shouldn't be our, we should not be.
All we want to know is that we're going to have at least four commissioners here. So commissioners should call me.
Ask me.
Tell me why they're not going to be here, so that I can make sure we have four. If we don't have four, we can't have a meeting.
And it's not ours to regulate why people are here or not here.
Well, still, people are supposed to show up to meetings, and this has been an inordinate amount of absences in a short period of time. We had this happen in Philadelphia, where people were going to have someone removed from the, from the school board for not showing up at meetings. I mean, so it actually makes sense to provide some explanation, honestly. We are paid for this.
Yeah, but that's for John, that's for, that's for the member to provide it, not for us.
Well, it's, I disagree with that.
And the constituents.
I think, I think it's worthy to make the public know.
I only bring up that there is precedent in terms of making the public know. I don't set rules of decorum or announcements. Please don't speak over me.
No, you mentioned it four times. We got it. Let's go. What else do you have to say?
Okay.
Your time's running out.
I know, and somebody over there indicated that I was wasting time.
Well, forget somebody over there, just such a.
I know, I'm not Cheryl Tumola. I don't get to interview people directly.
That's right.
Commissioner Spengler? I was very curious, well, a couple of things tonight. Number one, not hearing any commissioner under new business query John Rice again specifically about that 68-day change in terms of a specific zoning code, statute. It's very disconcerting when you're a member of the public and you see what appears to be an unambiguous law, such as Act Above Approach, for example, or see something, as pointed out by Mr. Kaplan in his letter regarding accessory use for parking spaces, and then to have a solicitor to not only state what the statute says, but who believes that the statute is clear, and then within 70 days, make a change. It leads to, if not anarchy, great inconsistency in a field of law where you need to have consistency, which is zoning. So perhaps at the next meeting, you can query John Rice as to the rationale behind that change. If the public is going to know that John Rice is taking these positions and then reversing them, the public should certainly know the impetus behind that, or whether or not John Rice even had any basis to make that change. If he comes out and says, "There really is no change in the case law at all when I made that position," then, yes, five minutes are almost up, and I understand it's important to perhaps leave as quickly as we might like, but the, but that is an important issue.
Well, the commissioners, we all got your point. Any commissioner can do whatever they want. We all have your point.
Any commissioner can do whatever they want. I would actually submit that commissioners are bound by the law to follow the law.
I'm satisfied.
But the assertion, the assertion that commissioners can do whatever they want is your position.
I'm satisfied.
It's not my position.
I'm satisfied with Mr. Rice.
Last thing I would bring up is that Maya Van Rossum, after I spoke at the beginning of the meeting, said that Jim Higgins had apologized to her. Now, what I found curious about that is, when you read what Jim Higgins says to the press, it doesn't really sound like he thinks that any apology is necessary. Here's what he said.
Well, she did say he apologized. That should be the end of it.
"I spoke with her." He said, "We had a conversation. I don't think I got too close to her." So even though I guess I'm not allowed to ask questions to members of the board specifically, I might ask, "Why did you apologize then, Commissioner Higgins?"
Thank you. Your time is up.
And the answer is, from Jim Higgins, "Good night, Mr. Sherry."
Good night.
I would say that is sadly, tragically, very predictable. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do you have a motion or adjourn?
Salute.
Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, passes, six to zero.